Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to invite, I'd like to welcome you to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, December the 12th, 2011. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any injustice.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Baker.
Here.
Galloway.
Here.
Lennon.
Here.
Tiana.
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here, yes, thank you. We have a quorum. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or corrections to the agenda this evening? I guess I would like to add two presentations this evening. Presentation D is an update on an incident that happened a couple of weeks ago involving the Department of Environmental Quality and one of our businesses here, Poller. And Item E, I see Craig Covey, our county commissioner in the House, and we always give him an opportunity to bring us up to date when he's here. So if I can add D and E, I appreciate that.
Question, do we need to add an item from the Police Department as well?
We do.
I would-
Add to the regular agenda.
Then I would like to add an item to the regular agenda from the Police Department regarding permission to fill the service aide position.
I'd support that amendment to the agenda.
All right. So we have a motion and a support?
I don't believe we had a motion.
Oh, we just had support. Kate, are you moving?
I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
That's what you're supporting? All right. And the amendments being two presentations and Item F on the regular agenda. Any other additions, corrections to the agenda? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Baker.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Tiana.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. Our agenda is adopted. All right, number item, number four presentations. Our first presentation this evening, however, is from the Ferndale Public Schools. And as always, we're happy to have you here to update us on what's going on at our public schools.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Stillger, Communication Specialist for Ferndale Public Schools. I'm going to start with the bond proposal update. Next Monday, our board will be asked to put a bond proposal on the ballot. If approved, the bond vote will be February 28th. The superintendent is hosting community meetings that are open to the public to talk about our district's facilities' needs. The next meeting is tomorrow at Roosevelt Primary School at 7:00 PM. Other scheduled meetings are Wednesday, January 11th, at the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Center from 6:00 to 8:00 PM; Monday, January 23rd, at Ferndale High School, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM; Monday, January 30th, at the Ferndale Library, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We're also working on scheduling meeting at the Kulik Center and with the Ferndale Senior Group. Again, the community is welcome to any of those meetings to come hear more about our district facilities' needs. Also, we have our biggest district-wide event coming up in January. It's called Extravaganza, and it's an opportunity to show our community what happens in our classrooms. Teachers come and they show lessons from their classrooms, from preschool all the way through high school. We also have concerts all day long, choir concert at 1:00, band concert at 4:00, and orchestra concert at 7:00. It's an opportunity to watch our music program from 4th grade through 12th grade, a complete collection, and show the growth in our community, in our school community. So we just would like everyone to know to save the date for Saturday, January 28th, from 12:00 to 4:00 PM, to come and see how we learn and learn more about your district. It's also time to start thinking about kindergarten for fall 2012. We are having our annual kindergarten information night on January 11th at our Grant Early Childhood Center. From 6:00 to 7:30 is the presentation, but anyone is welcome to a pizza dinner at 5:30. If you're coming to dinner, please RSVP at (248) 586-8686 to our enrollment office. We also have tours of both of our buildings with kindergarten, Roosevelt and Kennedy, every Wednesday. And that, there's more information about our tours and about our kindergarten programs on our enrollment page on our website, which is ferndalschools.org. And we also have some flyers that look like this about our kindergarten information night that we've put around town. All of the information that I'm sharing today is also available in our newsletters that we send out every week. They look like this. Anyone in the community is welcome to sign up by emailing fpsfanout@ferndalschools.org or join us on Facebook and Twitter where we will also post all of our latest information. That's it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Our next presentation, we have Friends of the Ferndale Library here this evening. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Beth O'Connor, and this is Cassie Sweetnich, and we're representing the Friends of the Ferndale Library. And we are going to be presenting this check to the Ferndale Library. But first, I did want to thank all of the council members and Mayor Coulter for supporting the prom and making it happen, because without you, of course, we would not have been able to have the prom. We also want to thank the library staff and board for also supporting our efforts to raise money for the library and the teen collection and programming. Also, we also just wanted to thank our community supporters, which were Pinwheel, Blooms, Tantra, Ally Darren Photography, Revolution Signs, The Web Rouge, and Treat Dreams. They all gave us donations or discounts, heavy discounts, on things that we needed for the prom. So with that, I would like to present Kate's with the check for $2,000, and that was the, what we made at the '80s prom. And on the back, we also have some Duran Duran imaging, and that is Kate's favorite band. And also, of course, since it was a '80s prom, we felt that that was fitting. Yes. So you can look forward to some exciting new programming, special events to raise money for the Ferndale Library. Hopefully, we'll see you guys there, and thanks again for your support.
Well, thank you for all your work. I know it was a great event and-
It was great fun.
... raised a considerable amount of money, which is very impressive. Yeah, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know Kate takes that with pleasure. Although, that's one of the largest checks I've seen us give.
You have to fold it over, yeah.
Thank you very much. Presentation C this evening is from the Traffic Improvement Association, and they did an analysis of the West Nine Mile and Allen traffic intersection. And they are here this evening to update us on the results of that analysis. Correct, Christina?
Correct, as well as some streetscape concepts as well. But first, I would like to introduce Jim Santilli, the Executive Director of the Traffic Improvement Association.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. As you're probably aware, TIA was created back in 1967 in response to Oakland County having one of the highest traffic fatality rates in the nation. And, you know, from that, we began TIA. We started focusing on engineering, education, enforcement, and providing those services to local municipalities here in Oakland County. Today, we serve more than 70 member communities, Ferndale being one of them, and we truly appreciate your support. Our work wouldn't be possible without the support of communities such as yours. We've also gathered the support of Alan Malali, CEO of Ford Motor Company, Sue Siski, Group Vice President, who actually serves as our Board Chair, and many others. What I wanted to do today, Oakland County actually has one of the lowest fatality rates in the nation at .40 deaths per 100 million vehicle miles of travel. That's good news, however, we are actually seeing an increase in fatalities, so there's much work still to be done. I wanted to present this plaque to the council. It reads, "The certificate is awarded to the city of Ferndale in recognition of your valuable contribution to saving lives and preventing injuries through your continued support of the Traffic Improvement Association, which has helped to make Oakland County roads among the safest in the world." Our staff has been working diligently, along with many of your employees, on several projects. And as promised last year to the council, I am going to be providing a report. I'm going to be submitting that to Byron tomorrow, and we're going to be presenting that at the council meeting in January. So they put in a lot of hours and a lot of hard work. So thank you for your support, and you want me to bring this up to you, or?
That'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And I'm going to start it off by just giving everyone a little bit of a brief overview of what we're trying to achieve with streetscape design. Generally, what your, what your goal is, is to really try to drive economic growth, building a quality environment within the area that really provides the connectivity between residential neighborhoods and businesses and experience that is both from a vehicular and a pedestrian level. So you want to see consistency within the streetscapes as well, from area to area. And obviously, as you know, you have adopted a complete streets ordinance, which is multimodals. So when we're looking at our streetscape design, we're looking at pedestrian safety, walkability, accessibility, ADA compliancy, as well as bikability in many fashions, and the traffic flow and safety for cars and trucks, and hopefully, preparing for bigger goals of mass transit. So what we're talking about today is really a couple of different areas in downtown Ferndale. West Nine Mile from Woodward to Pine Crest, and then also Allen, from Nine Mile to Troy Street. So with that, I broke this down into the different areas, just to kind of give people some of the things that we're facing with in terms of challenges within those areas for streetscape design. In the West Nine Mile area, what you're seeing a lot of is ADA accessibility issues. It is very much pedestrian, unfriendly, and unsafe in a lot of areas. There is no on-street parking in this section of downtown Ferndale, and it's definitely an uninviting environment. We had focus groups back in the summertime, and, you know, everyone within that area that was coming in from residents and businesses alike were really just saying, "We want to see the same things that the rest of downtown Ferndale has." And so they were, they were really expressing their desire to see an improved neighborhood. There's inadequate pedestrian crossings and ramps, as well as there's a misalignment in terms of traffic at Pine Crest. At Livernoy, traffic signals are definitely interesting, to say the least. You sit there for a very long time, whether you're a motorist or a pedestrian, which causes confusion, as well as with confusion comes a little bit of anticipation for the light to turn. So I've definitely seen cars actually turning against the red light when they're not supposed to, as well as pedestrians really not knowing when to go. I've actually helped to guide people across the street at times myself. So there's definitely some poor sightlines that you'll see when you're pulling out from residential streets onto Nine Mile. What you're, what you have happening is that the buildings, because they're at the, at zero-lot line, people are having to pull further out into Nine Mile to be able to see if they can get across traffic. At Allen and Troy, some of the same things are going on in terms of accessibility and the unfriendliness for pedestrians as well. But you definitely see the inadequacy in terms of the pedestrian crossings and ramps. There's, there's not a crossing from the west side of Allen to the east side of Allen, south of Troy Street. There's poor sightlines at Troy and Allen, as well as truck access turns, it's a tight turn radius in that area. And because it's such a short little strip, it's made it really challenging for us to develop a concept that will work for both pedestrians and motorists alike. Lording zones become, come into conflict at times within that area, as well as there is some traffic congestion. And one of the bigger safety issues that we've all noticed and are appreciating, the three-way stop that we have temporarily, is that there was only a two-way stop at that intersection, which really caused some safety and sightline issues for motorists pulling into Allen. As for Nine Mile and Woodward, this is another area that we wanted them, TIA, to look at in terms of the challenges we're facing, is a lot of times it's about driver awareness. When a pedestrian is crossing Woodward at Nine Mile, what you have happening is pedestrians really looking to see who's turning and who's going straight across Nine Mile. So they're having to be very alert as they're crossing and in realizing that drivers aren't as alert when they're turning. And a lot of times, you'll see that motorists are probably slamming on their brakes because they weren't expecting a pedestrian to be crossing. But we always have to be cognizant of traffic flow and traffic congestion when making any So some of the opportunities that have presented themselves and why we're starting to look at these things, one reason is because we need to look at these things. But two, there are some opportunities that are coming up in terms of federal funding that the DPW, as a city, has received. They received a 3R federal grant for resurfacing Nine Mile. This would be going from Plantavon to Pine Crest in 2013. So with that, we really wanted to look at that West Nine Mile area to see what else do we need to do to coincide improvements at the same time. There is also water main improvements that are needed between Livernoy and Pine Crest, as well as the DDA has put together its capital improvement plan, and West Nine Mile was one of the focuses. As I mentioned, we had held some focus groups this past summer and continue to hold focus groups, and some of these things continue to be brought up. And the DDA has funded preliminary engineering for West Nine Mile and started looking at putting funding in for this fiscal year, as well as planning for future years for funding of these projects, hopefully. So this year, for sure, we already have Troy and Allen budgeted for this fiscal year. TIA does provide, through its membership, traffic engineering analysis. And really, with all these things kind of coming to head, we, we could not make some decisions on Troy and Allen internally. We were really struggling with what we could do, so we thought this was the perfect opportunity for us to contact TIA, have them come out for this, but at the same time, start looking at the West Nine Mile corridor as well, because we would have to do that analysis anyways in proceeding with any future grant applications that we would be going after for streetscape improvements. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave Allen, who is with Traffic Improvement Association, who will tell you a little bit more about this study.
Good evening. I'm Dave Allen. I'm the traffic safety engineer for TIA. We were asked by, been working with the city and the DDA on looking at the consequences of what would happen for various issues along Nine Mile and along Allen Road. We looked at the narrowing, as was mentioned, of Nine Mile from five lanes to three lanes. We looked at the, the alignment of the left turn lanes, if you want, on Pine Crest. That requires doing away with one of the right turn lanes. We looked at an overall, just a very initial level of analysis as far as a possible roundabout at Livernoy and Nine Mile. We looked at the possibility of making the, what is currently the right-through lane on eastbound Nine Mile at Woodward into a right-turn-only lane. We looked at some signing there to, to help motorists, remind motorists of the fact that they have to actually yield to the pedestrians that are in the crosswalk. We then looked at the narrowing, the possibility of narrowing northbound Allen Road to, from two lanes to one lane. We looked at some pedestrian facility issues down at Troy and Allen, and we also looked at either the possibility of changing what was previously the two-way stop to either a traffic signal or a three-way stop. So that's what we were, what we, we discussed in the beginning, and that's what we were told to focus on. What we did is we took turning movement counts at all the signalized intersections and also at the intersection of Allen and Troy. And this is basically somebody, a person, sometimes two, depending on how busy the intersection is, sitting out at the intersection for a couple hours in the morning and a couple hours in the afternoon, and they actually keep track of who goes left, right, and through. So, but what that does is, that's the basis of our data input into a traffic program that's called Syncro. And, and what Syncro does is it, the output of that gives you levels of service, and the level of service just quickly tells you about the delay that is at or could be at the intersection. And it ranges, just like grades in elementary school, from A to F. A is really good, and F is obviously failure. So what we did, the first, yeah, the first, the first location I want to discuss is just the narrowing of Nine Mile from five lanes to three lanes. What, what the analysis showed is you have a good level of service right now. When you narrow it down to three lanes, the, the level of service does drop one level, but it's going from, I think it was a B to a C. And anything down to a D is, is acceptable, especially during the peak hours, the rush hours. So that, it, it works out that it is acceptable to, to reduce it down to three lanes. We did recommend, or suggesting that you keep, keep, or construct a right-turn-only lane or a through, through right lane on, on westbound Nine Mile at Pine Crest, just to keep that additional extra capacity if you're ever needed to get through the signals. Because it's the actual signals that limit the, the actual, limit the capacity at the-
What is the criteria for those standards? I mean, what, what makes a A capacity versus B versus C?
It's based, it's based on a delayed of the vehicles. It's based on the National Highway Capacity Manual.
So the standard, the A standard, the high, the criteria you're applying is, how do we get people through here as quickly as possible, right?
Cars. How do we get cars through as quickly as possible? That's all it looks at.
Well, basic, basically what it's looking at is we put the, the existing traffic flow in, and with the existing laneage, it gives us a level of service, okay? And then what you do is you reduce, essentially reduce the laneage in the, in the program from five lanes down to three lanes, with or without that right-turn lane I mentioned, and it gives you levels of service. And so basically, what you're doing is, is comparing those levels of service and then trying to determine, you know, if, if it was going to drop from a C to a E, it wouldn't be, you know, be less desirable.
So if our interest is in calming traffic, then going from a B to a C or a C to a D is an improvement?
You can think of it that way?
Not necessarily.
No?
I mean, you'd be, oh, you're going to delay, I guess you're going to delay traffic. You're going to line them up. I suppose it, it depends. I mean, going from B to C isn't going to be an issue. C to D's not an issue. If you, if you got to E, and obviously, F would, would be an F issue. I mean, just from a traffic engineering point of view, kind of have to, you kind of want to look at getting traffic that wants to get through your area, through your area.
But is it through your area safely or through your area quickly?
Well, your, your, your speed limits, your speed limit's already as low as it's going to, is legal, so you're already at 25. So the, the vehicles are still going through at that speed. You have a good level of service at the intersections right now, and it will continue after. Now, I suppose if you're looking at traffic calming in some instance, if you, by providing, by providing parking on both sides of the road, that will cause, and it's in the program too, to some extent, but it causes some interference with traffic flow, which would tend to slow traffic down, if you want it. So that's, I guess that would, the, the parking on, on both sides in Nine Mile would cause, you know, some, some traffic calming.
Okay.
The next thing that we looked at was aligning the left-turn lane on Pine Crest and Nine Mile. It's offset. My understanding it was, it became offset when the, the bike lanes went in. But anyway, it's a four-lane offset with, so it's a, at least a 12-foot offset, and with the tapering going, the only tapering is through the middle of the intersection. We looked at, the way to, to correct this is to, is to remove one of the right-turn lanes, either northbound or southbound. I looked at both options, and basically, you know, looked, wasn't a difference in level of service between the two options. It does reduce it for, for Pine Crest, but it's going again from a B to a C. The, as you'll see, Scott's going to discuss it later, but due to construction, it was determined that the, it would be better to remove the southbound right-turn lane. But the level of service, again, is still good for the intersection. And we went over-
And that's just, just because, just the dedicated right-turn lane?
Yes.
So it's not that there's not a right turn from-
No, no, no. The, the right turns are, it'll be-
It's just a dedicated right turn.
Yeah, so southbound, yeah, the, the remaining lane will be a through right lane.
Okay.
And then, as I said, we looked at, we just did a real cursory review of Livernoy and Nine Mile as far as the possibility of a roundabout. Software we were using isn't really meant to be used to determine if roundabouts should go in. We did use a different software for that, Sidra, and it shows that a single-lane roundabout would work at a level of service A. We suggested that the city DDA look, actually, get with a roundabout expert consultant, look at that, and that will be gone over with you later in the presentation. Been over at, at Nine Mile Woodward, eastbound right-turn lane, so through right now. There's no, if you make it a right-turn-only lane, it doesn't lower the level of service. It doesn't change it. It doesn't do a whole lot to the delay. And, and there's, the traffic, there's not going to be a lot of benefit to making a right-turn-only lane because that lane's so short. The benefit that's been discussed with our group is the fact that, right now, there's confusion with the pedestrians when they're crossing Woodward, as to whether the traffic in that right lane is going to be turning right and, and causing them a problem when we're going through. If it's all, if the only traffic in that lane is right-turn lane traffic, then they'll know when they see a vehicle that they need to be really watched for it. So we were also asked to look at a signing, potential signing for eastbound traffic, and it basically just reinforces what are, what is already the law, which basically says, vehicles must, when they're turning, must yield to pedestrians in the, in the crosswalk. And there's an actual sign that is in the Michigan Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and we're suggesting that be installed. Over at, on Allen Road, as I said, we, we looked at reducing the two northbound lanes to one lane. The analysis shows that the level of service actually stays the same, doesn't change. The issue at this location, however, is that when we're actually taking the turning movement counts, the person taking the turning movement counts saw many times when there were four vehicles backed up, you know, queued in the, in the left-turn-only lane and, and two, a couple vehicles in the right-turn lane. If you put all those into one lane, those six vehicles, that six vehicles, then into the intersection down at Troy. And then that's, that was the issue with that. We saw the, we also saw the same thing when the, when it was temporarily, temporarily narrowed to one lane, and we observed the same thing out in the field. So although there's no change in the level of service, we think there's a, there's a safety concern there in just the traffic flow. To me, this is a critical, short little section of road for, for traffic flow around your downtown area. So it's recommended that the, the two lanes remain. We also looked at, and you'll see when Scott goes through in the presentation, trying to figure out a way to widen the sidewalk on the east side, look at some ADA issues down at Allen and Troy for the, for the existing crossing, and then look at, that we're suggesting at a new crossing on the, the south leg of Allen at Troy. Then the last thing we reviewed was the operation of Troy at Allen. It had the, the two-way stop previously. It was a northbound stop and a westbound stop. It was confusing to motorists, and it was confusing to pedestrians. Additionally, with the Rosie Grady's and the new- Additionally, with the Rosier Gradies and the new configuration there in the northeast corner, there's, there's more of a site restriction in that corner also, so there's a, a site distance issue. The analysis, we looked at a traffic signal. I was asked to look, to see if it met warrants, and it, it doesn't. The, the volumes are just too low, and there was no crash experience there. We also looked at an all-way stop, and it, via the, the actual numbers, the traffic volume's even low for that, but there's options in the Michigan Manual that allow a multi-way stop if there are pedestrian conflicts with vehicles, and that's what I, my recommendation, suggestion is that it be a three-way stop, just due to the, the, I guess, the confusing nature of the previous setup. And when we did the analysis through Synchro, it, it, even with what you'll see are gonna be proposed, one lane approaches on all three legs, it still operates at a level of service A.
So, oh, so even though it says that the, that new temporary stop sign on the southbound lane is, is still being reviewed by the police department, your recommendation is that that would work there?
Yeah, so far, unless, you know, unless there's a, unless somebody sees something in the field, and, you know, that would, would cause an issue with that.
No, anecdotally, I love that stop sign there.
Yeah.
I don't know about anybody else, but I think it works. But I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm just a driver, but that, that-
No, it, when I've been out, well, I've been out there a few ti, when I've been out there to see it, it looks like it's functioning fine. Like I said, when we did the, the analysis, and, and it shows, it was at level of service A, even with one lane approaches, which you'll see why that discussion's being had, it still, it still stays, stays at a high level, so.
Now, was there any concern with stacking back onto Nine Mile?
There was, but the, 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 the analysis program doesn't show an issue. Like I said, it, and when I've been out there watching, and I haven't heard from anyone else that there's been a stacking issue southbound. So, that would be, that would be the, the one reason it could be a concern with a three-way, a three-way stop.
So, the program didn't suggest that it would be a problem, and your person in the field hasn't observed it either, is that...
Yeah, and I haven't heard from anybody at the city that there's an issue there. I expect that I would hear that we've got an issue out there, so.
Maybe at the end, we can have the police chief come up too, and answer questions towards the end of the presentation, so.
Okay.
Next, I'll turn over Scott Ringler, who'll go through the, the geometrics of the proposals.
Great, thank you. Hi, Scott.
Thanks, Dave. Good evening. Scott Ringler with Giffords Webster Engineers. I was gonna touch base real quickly on, on the scope of the project. In 2009, the city was successful in getting a Safety Lou grant for the resurfacing of Nine Mile from Pinecrest to Plantavon. It was a $400,000 grant, split 80/20. The city would pay the 20% of that. The majority of that work is the resurfacing of Nine Mile, so it'd be milling the existing asphalt, putting three and a half inches of new asphalt, and it also would include upgrading all the ADA ramps on each cross street there. So, but I do, based on this, this is the geometrics from Pinecrest to Livernoy's, and because this is federally funded, we have to jump through a few hoops to get MDOT to approve this, so. Just so we're aware of that, the first hoop to jump through is to make sure that the traffic would work, and that's what TIA has proven, that, that the traffic will still be at an approvable level of service through that corridor. So, a couple of the other things we gotta do, you know, the traffic study, and we gotta do an environmental review on this. So, we're still working through a few of these things before we get MDOT's approval on that, so. This cross-section, though, would reduce the existing five lanes down to three lanes. Basically, is what we would do, is take the outer two lanes and convert them into parking bays. There would be two lanes of traffic each direction, both 12-foot wide, with 11-foot center-left turn lane, so. The one issue we wanted to take care of during this construction project is, as Dave mentioned, the north-south corridor at Pinecrest. When we put the bike lanes in, we forced them in, and by forcing them in, we got our lanes really skewed out there. And as you can see, the left turn pockets are basically opposing, or facing opposing traffic. Has some issues there. It's very difficult to get through that intersection. Even the east-west corridor at Nine Mile, just through the, the past years of expanding that, you can see that we got about a 10-foot lane offset there, too. The good thing there is the left turn pockets don't, don't face opposing traffic, they're kinda posing with traffic, so it's a little safer there. So, through the construction process, and if we look at the after, you can see how we're gonna straighten all them lanes out. And to do that on Pinecrest, we had two options, to take the right turn, southbound right turn onto westbound Nine Mile, or the northbound right turn onto eastbound Nine Mile. It was a 50/50 flip. The traffic analysis had the same amount of right turns in each direction. And as what we concluded, by taking the southbound right turn pocket, we would be able to expand the ADA ramp in front of 7-Eleven. It's a real tight corner there. So, by pushing that curb to the west, we'll be able to get more of an ADA ramp, a little safer intersection there. So, that, that was the justification for taking the southbound. And then, the, as far as Nine Mile, is what we would do is the, the eastbound outer lane would be converted to a right turn only, onto southbound Pinecrest. And to do that, is what we would have, is, is we would start our three-lane cross-section on the east side of Pinecrest there. With a fourth leg would be a westbound through or a right turn pocket. So, we were able to take that cross-section and push it south in order to line them lanes up, so. Some of the on-street parking concepts, looking through that, you're gonna see the three lanes there, the center-left turn lane, parking on both the north and south side. In order to do that, we're gonna basically push the road about five foot north, and it's now gonna be lined up right in the center of the right-of-way through that corridor. To do that, it's gonna allow us to have an eight-and-a-half-foot parking bay, seven-foot wide sidewalks, and either a three-foot greenbelt area, or some of that might be concrete also, as it butts up the buildings. So, it's gonna be a much wider corridor through there for walkability, for safety. The other nice aspect to have in the parking bays is, is it's a buffer between the travel lane and the walkers, and the people on the sidewalks, so.
I've got a quick question on that, Scott. Does that require us acquiring any private property?
Yeah, there are four to five properties we need to get right-of-way from, and you can see there's a little bit up there. I don't know all these places. The barber shop-
Nine, well, yeah, it's state-of-the-art, the barber shop, um, salon on the nine.
Yeah, it passed, just passed CVS.
Yeah, yep.
There's even a little portion of CVS we may have to acquire, or we may have to work around it.
Or we may want to acquire, just to make it work.
Thank you.
A few of the things we'll take care of there is, we're gonna get rid of the DTE poles that are right in the middle of sidewalks. We're already in correspondence-
Thank you.
We're in correspondence with DTE to, to see what it's gonna take for them to decommission their poles. As I said, all the ADA ramps would be upgraded and certified. We're looking at potentially using a porous pavement section in the parking bays, which basically takes away a lot of your drainage structures, so we'll take the storm water from the road and drain it into the parking bays. The porous pavement will drain through the pavement into the subgrade. We're currently having soil borings done to, to make sure we can do that. One of the reasons, we'll get rid of storm water that won't have to go into your storm system, and secondly, there's potential to add that into the, the TE grant, is an environmental section in there to get part of that funded. The improved site distance, at most of them corners there, as you pull up into the corner, there's usually a building right at zero setback line. So, by going to a three lane, we're gonna be pushing basically that, your, your stop bar further north, further south, depending on where you're at there. So, you get better visibility as far as site distance, so. I do wanna forewarn you, we haven't done site distance checks on all them parking bays, so we have to look at that, too, make sure, once we pull in there, we can see through the cars or the parking bays, so. And the, the bottom's basically a typical cross-section through there, so.
Can you, okay, before you-
Oh, you want me to go back?
Okay. Even one slide back, if you don't mind. So, as we, I, I like the reconfigured intersection a lot. Are we, one of the problems with eastbound Nine Mile now is, as you approach Livernoy, if you're in the right-hand lane, you don't realize until almost too late that, oops, I'm in a right-hand turn lane, and now you have to get over, and I don't know if it has caused traffic incidents, but it certainly causes confusion there. But it, it seems almost like we're, we may have that same problem as we approach Pinecrest, because you're gonna go, because that lane is gonna suddenly turn into a right turn only.
Yeah, we definitely have to sign that appropriately.
Right.
A lot of arrows out there, make sure that vehicles know that is a right turn only lane.
All right. So, you do that through signage and other things?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I don't know how, how, how it is done. It doesn't feel like it's done well enough now at Livernoy, so if there's a way to improve that at Pinecrest, that would be helpful.
Well, the other thing that may help is, is you come through there, you're gonna see a buffer, because as you drive through there in a right turn lane, it's basically gonna be, there's gonna be no lane in front of ya, as far as on the east side. We'd like to have a little taper there, but there's, there's not enough right-of-way there to do that.
Thank you.
So, this is the roundabout. As Dave said, this is very specialized, so I am by far no expert in this. The people, we hired Mike Gingrich out of Indiana, has, has done a lot of roundabouts, he's done quite a few for us out in Commerce Township. Dave mentioned, he ran a program called Sidra that came out with a level of service A. Our right-of-way guy ran a different program, it's called Rodell, and it's used pretty much throughout the country, and his level of service also came out with a level of service A, so. Anytime you do a roundabout, your starting time, you wanna have a level of service A, so that worked real good here. I did give him some constraints. At the southeast and southwest corner, there's right-of-way constraints, so he had to stay at least 10-foot away from the right-of-way, to give enough room for sidewalks and pedestrians through there, so. So, that worked out east and west on the south side, and the north side, you can see, we're pushing into the food land and the, I think it's the old Blockbuster there. So, there, there's gonna be some right-of-way there. We're working through the legal work right now, and what's actually the city has out there as far as an easement, so. But as far as the, the roundabout, it's a one-lane roundabout. I really think the one lane'll work out good out here. Two lanes start to get a little confusing, and, and there's definitely not enough right-of-way out here for a two-lane, so. The little red-hatched area in there is a, a truck-turning apron. That definitely would have to be verified with respect to turning templates, especially with the new fire truck that's been purchased. Make sure we can get them trucks north, and then back to the west through there. The area to the north, actually, I gave them direction to, to treat that exactly the same as it is now. So, it's gonna have more of a driveway feel going to the north right now than a, than a true intersection north leg on there, so. As far as walkability, it's gonna be a lot easier than walking east-west right now on the south side of the street. You basically have one lane of traffic to cross, and that one lane is one-way. And there's splitter islands in between, they're a little safe haven in between, so. I was expecting some questions on this one.
Well, I was, I was just gonna, I was just gonna add in, and, you know, this is something that, you know, we're, we've been looking at as a DDA for a while, as to how do we treat this intersection, what our, what our options are, and we can continue to look at what the other options are for that intersection, but first, we wanted to really kind of look at this as a, as a potential, and see if it was even really possible, before we ventured into maybe like a Plan, Plan B or a Plan C with that intersection. There's so many lanes that come into that intersection that, you know, it, it's, it's massive for the size and nature of the traffic that I think that's going through there. The other thing that the DDA has definitely heard from, from residents and businesses alike, is that north section, and I, I'm sure this was probably gonna be a question at some point, was really with the Ferndale Foods parking lot, whether or not opening up Livernoy to go through again or not, and it's still something that the DDA would like to pursue and look into further, and we're doing some, excuse me, some of the property analysis right now to see what is out there. But we had a lot of people that would just say that, you know, it'd be great if we had like a sidewalk at a minimum, and it would be wonderful if we could actually get through, because we actually have quite a few residents that use that, not necessarily as a cut-through, but to really get, get to people and get to places. And you then have people cutting through Ferndale Foods parking lot anyways, and they're cutting across diagonally. So, you know, I think it's something that we have to take into consideration. It's not part of this overall plan yet, but I think it's still something that we have to continue investigating a little bit further. And there was one other thing, Kate, I wanted to point out, too, just going back to, you'll see in the middle of this, of the street-
I was gonna ask if that's a pedestrian crosswalk.
Yes.
Yes.
So, so-
My name is Chris Roller.
So, listening to what people are telling us, and trying to integrate that stuff into, into our design.
And that's, that still works with the level of service, that, that crosswalk?
Yes. It wouldn't be a signalized crosswalk, it would just be a crossing, yeah, it would be just marked, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
On the roundabout, I, and I know that there are a lot of different options and questions about the Ferndale Foods parking lot, but at, at, at the bare minimum, if we are, if it's a roundabout or something else, if we're talking about potentially acquiring property on the north end, I, I would love it if we could look at changing that, so, because it's that north end that I think is the hardest to walk across, at least at the south end, you, you have lights that actually light up when you push the button, and you can walk across. It's that north end where, where people cut through at the Ferndale Foods parking lot that I find more difficult to walk across as a pedestrian. So, if there's any way to think about even extending something up and doing it, I don't, I don't know what it would look like, but if, if we end up acquiring property, we should think about if slightly more makes a difference to pedestrians.
Okay.
Well, we could look at a bigger splitter island up there, a little safer-
Yeah, I know, we're gonna be looking at a lot more on this, yeah.
So, just one thing about, the last thing about this is, we have two phases of this. This was just the concept. Our, our consultant took all the traffic movements from TIA, and, and put it through the model, and came up with this concept. The next phase he would have to go through is put it in the CAD, just to make sure it is gonna work in this intersection. So, we haven't had to move forward on that yet, until we get any feedback, so.
And on the roundabout, we don't need to make a determination on this intersection to, for this grant, for the grant that goes to Plantavon, Nine Mile and Plantavon, correct?
True.
We, we do.
True.
These are separate questions, not related, so, right?
These are concepts, yeah.
So, we have time to study this, because, and I know at the DDA meeting last week, you told me, but we haven't done other concepts that aren't a roundabout, that it, that will, that try to address some of the issues at that intersection.
Correct.
And we don't have a, something to compare a roundabout versus a more traditional intersection.
Yeah, right.
We'll get that, we'll be able to look at that and see. But you just wanted an initial, would it even work? Do we even wanna bother-
Rule it in or rule it out.
Studying the idea.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
I really like the, this concept. I was part of the public outreach process that the DDA had, and one of the comments from me and from others, that the crosswalks didn't seem to be a natural crossing area with the roundabout concept that was presented for public comment. So, this seems to address that a little bit more, and I agree with Kate, the north crosswalk in the parking lot needs to be addressed as part of anything that we do.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Other comments about the roundabout, or we wanna move on to?
Nope.
Let's move on then.
All right. This is the other section of road, this would be from Livernoy to Plantavon. This is just going to be a mill and overlay, ADA upgrade, strike back to current configuration, so that there's no planned changes here. The Troy and Allen concept, we literally been working on this for close to a year now. Come up with a lot of different-
Over.
A lot of different iterations of this, and this is what we all decided on. I guess you could call it the, you know, more of a, you know, I think we're calling it the tapered concept, is what we have currently is a 14-foot southbound lane, two nine-foot northbound lanes. We looked at eliminating the right turn northbound lane, and making that center lane a left turn, right turn lane. In fact, the traffic barrels were put up last month to see how that worked, and a lot of traffic backing up, a lot of congestion in the Allen-West-Troy intersection, so. Is what we determined is to try the tapered approach, and get as much sidewalk as we can through that, that corridor there. So, we're going to keep existing the, the first 30 feet from the north towards the south, 14 two-foot, nine-foot lanes. 14 two-foot, nine-foot lanes. Further south, we're gonna have a 30-foot transition, and what we're gonna do is take that 14-foot lane and push it down to a, or lessen it to a 12-foot lane with two nine foots next to it, and that would run all the way south to the intersection. By keeping that 14-foot lane on the north, it helps the eastbound Nine Mile southbound trucks turn through there. And then also by narrowing it to 12-foot at the south end, it helps the westbound Troy, northbound Allen trucks turn through there. So it's helping our turning radiuses through there, and we're also gaining about anywhere from foot and a half to two foot of sidewalk through there. And then on West Troy, we're looking at doing two bumpouts. We're gonna get rid of the right turn lane, and I don't, there's not gonna be a loading zone there, the, let's see, Rosie O'Grady's parking, or their parking area back there comes basically right out to the end of that bumpout, so there's not gonna be any room there, we're just gonna tie into their driveway back there. And then we're gonna do the same thing on the south side. That's gonna, one, help our turning radius for right turns, because now they're further out, so they can turn better through there, and it's gonna make a much shorter crosswalk for pedestrians. And we're gonna do the same thing on the south side of West Troy, we're gonna bump that out, we'll be able to get a wider sidewalk through there also, and also install a crosswalk there. So, and that'll be, you know, there'll be stop-controlled crosswalks there.
And the DDA did review this on Thursday, we actually walked out to the site and Stacy took her chalk out there and outlined where things would be narrowed down and so forth, and it actually, like when you were out there, it was very exciting to kinda get that feeling of how it would improve the pedestrian intersection there, but still maintain existing traffic, so happy to see that the concept, I think, is probably a good working concept, so.
I have a question before we move on to the next one. The corner, the corner at Rosie O'Grady's where the big signal pole is, is there any conversation in this plan about moving the pole?
Well, it's an electrical pole, so.
It's where the lights come from, right? Isn't it the signal pole?
There's no signal there.
Oh, do you mean at Nine Mile?
Yes, I'm sorry, at Nine and Allen, our signal pole.
Right, no, we have not actually talked about that, no.
Okay, all right. I get asked about that.
Thanks, okay.
I think there's two more quick ones, don't take much. We just, here's the truck-turning template, so you can see how the, that one's a, what do we got on that, a 33-foot straight body truck. So you can see at West Troy and Allen, it makes a wide turn, but it stays in the northbound two lanes. We definitely got some issues turning southbound from Nine Mile, they pull into that left turn pocket, and same going northbound on the eastbound Nine Mile. These are very conservative, too, so there's a little bit of factor of safety in these and.
Some of that already happens now, if you've ever been out there when there's a truck turning. We've had, on the northwest side at Allen and Nine Mile, we've had that light pole, or the signal pole actually hit, so, and many of our planner containers have rolled away, so.
This is just, this is a 40-foot, this is your typical beer truck, so, with all the deliveries we got, get through there without, it'd be best to put one of them on there, so.
Okay, so in summary, the recommendations, just to kinda recap everything quickly here, is that Troy and Allen is to continue to do the 90-day observation for the three-way stop at Allen and Troy, remove the right turn lane on westbound Troy at Allen, add ADA appropriate ramps and bumpouts at the intersection on both north and south side of Troy and Allen. Extend loadings, actually, we're not gonna be extending that loading zone area, we'll be taking the curb out to that, so that was just a modification based on last week's observation. Add crosswalks across Allen, south of Troy Street at stop sign, and ADA ramp on west side of Allen to connect to the residential sidewalk, and we're recommending that tapered lane concept. On West Nine Mile.
Okay, so on that one then.
Sorry?
Chief, do you wanna just maybe tell us what you guys are looking at in terms of that extra stop sign and what it is you're evaluating with that?
Thank you, Your Honor. We are, we put that up when we had the three-way stop when we were doing the conceptual with the barricades, to look at the one, the change in the northbound lane to one lane from two. And we have had one officer see that there was a backup there, but it only happened one time, and we haven't reached, and I've asked all of our officers as well as the parking folks to keep an eye on that. By and large, we have nothing but positive responses to the three-way stop, and, but we don't necessarily have to go 90 days with it, but I did wanna give it more than a week. So, we'd like to keep it out there maybe through the holidays and keep, if we do see any issues with it, maybe even a little bit longer, but so far, I agree with TIA and the three-way stop seems to be working. One of my concerns was the warrants, but we've been able to work through that, and there is, the warrants are gonna be, would be applicable, maybe not for the traffic numbers, but certainly for the pedestrian safety issues. So, that's where we're at with that.
Good.
We're very pleased with the outcome. Some of these were compromises on the two lanes and the tapered effect, but overall, I think this is a very workable solution that solves a lot of the issues.
Appreciate it.
Any questions on?
Yeah, any questions to the chief?
So, the, for West Nine Mile in Woodward, we would change the eastbound through lane at Woodward and Nine Mile to a right turn only and install signage as recommended, so that would be for the yielding to pedestrians as they're cross, in the crosswalks. For West Nine Mile between Livinoy and Pinecrest, it would be the lane reduction, as noted, on-street parking, pedestrian accessibility, and safety improvements, streetscape amenities and environment, and realigning Livinoy and Pinecrest with the removal of the southbound Pinecrest right turn only lane. So, that is it for our presentation?
Now, this is just the presentation, you're not looking for a formal?
No, that's at the end of the agenda, so.
Yeah.
Darn.
All right, so if we come up with other questions we have, we'll take them later in the meeting. Thank you very much. Thanks, gentlemen, appreciate it. All right, let's go on to our next presentation, which is the one I referenced earlier that we added to the agenda. A couple of weeks ago, we had an incident at a business in Ferndale that's by the name of Polar Environmental, and a lot of residents, both in Ferndale and in Pleasant Ridge, smelled a very, very strong odor that smelled a lot like natural gas, or a lot of calls to consumers' energy, but also to our fire department. I'm gonna ask our city manager to talk a little bit about what we've done to address this issue, but I noticed some of our friends from Pleasant Ridge are in the audience, so I just wanna introduce, and they may have some things to say as well, but the city manager of Pleasant Ridge, Sherry Ball, I see you back there, Sherry, good evening, and a couple of commissioners, right? Ann Perry, is that you back there? And Jason, I don't wanna butcher your last name, is it Crzyak?
Yes.
Crzyak, oh, I got it, okay, great. Welcome to Ferndale, and please feel free to contribute to this conversation as you like, all right? But April, why don't you introduce this item for us?
Thank you. As many residents are aware, on Friday, December 2nd, at approximately 5:30 PM, the Ferndale Fire Department responded to numerous calls regarding the smell of natural gas. They quickly identified that it was not natural gas, but that there was an issue at Polar Environmental, at which time they not only got ahold of the company, Polar Environmental, but did call MDEQ right away to ensure that they were able to come and assess the situation as well. Over the course of the last week, I know that there's been a lot of concern of what exactly happened and what's being done about that, and one of the things that I know as staff, with both Pleasant Ridge staff as well as Ferndale staff, was we wanted to hear from the DEQ about what they saw as happening and what they were doing to address the situation as well, and not just to hear from Polar Environmental. So with that, and they heard many of the concerns, they had numerous phone calls from many residents in both Pleasant Ridge and in Ferndale, they were gracious enough to hold a conference call with all of us. And so today at 1:00, Ferndale staff, which included the mayor, and Pleasant Ridge staff, which included two of their council members as well, was, were able to participate in that call today to find out exactly what role that the MDEQ is taking in this company. And I think it was a very insightful meeting, and of course, at any time, too, if anybody has more to add to this, please jump in at any time. But I wanna give the community kind of an overview of what it was that we heard today, and I think from my standpoint, I think from many of us who were at that conference call today, felt very comforted that the MDEQ is taking this as a huge priority in their workload right now, and have put a lot of steps into really taking control of what's going on over at Polar Environmental. I think, I feel that the MDEQ assured both communities that, again, that Polar Environmental and the situation that's happened has taken on a high priority with the MDEQ. They have indicated that they have cited violations to Polar Environmental, not only for working through what happened last week, but apparently over the last few months, they've been working with this company to look at being a little more strict with the regulations that they've placed on them. I'm gonna probably butcher this a little bit, but a little behind, before this occurred today, there had been, depending on what levels they were discharging, they didn't need a permit. As long as they were providing the correct documentation and such, they were able to do certain things with their discharge that did not require formal permit from the MDEQ, but again, did require them to supply testing and the background behind that. Well, according to MDEQ, that's changed now, and that they, what they want to discharge will require a permit. And so, this has sparked a whole nother train of events for this company, that they're going to have to provide further documentation as well as go through the permit process, which is where our residents come in. And what will happen is, is that, first of all, with the violations that they've been cited, that they are, MDEQ's first and foremost focus is that they come into compliance, and they'll be monitoring that situation and ensuring that they're following the timeline and making sure that they do it in a, not only follow the timeline, but in a timely manner as they respond to some of these changes. What will happen as they go through this process and start the permit process, that there will be an opportunity for the public to provide comment with their questions and concerns as it relates to that permit. So, one of the things that city manager Ball and I from Pleasant Ridge will be doing is making sure that we have regular updates from MDEQ, so that our residents are aware of when that public comment can be made, so that they have the opportunity to go to Lansing and be heard about their concerns. And one of the things that I found was interesting, and I'm sure many that did on the phone, was that every question or concern that any resident or anybody makes regarding a permit will require in writing from the MDEQ addressing those concerns and answering those questions, which I thought was, again, very comforting that they have those things in place, so that we all feel that we are heard and that the concerns that we address with that company are, again, identified. We, they have until December 30th to respond to MDEQ's request for the permit. I don't, from what I gather, didn't mean that the permit had to be in by December 30th, but that they're continuing to be working toward that process. And so how we left it at that point was that Ms. Ball and I will be calling the MDEQ and keeping in contact with them, and we'll be talking to them again in mid-January to see where they are, other tests are going to come back as well, that they have, that the MDEQ has done, as well as the next steps for Polar Environmental at that point should be addressed. So we're thinking probably in January or February, well, the permit would come in front of the MDEQ for them to continue to discharge at the level that they would like. I think that that pretty much summarizes the meeting that day. I do want, though, some of the confusion and some of the concern that our residents had, and those in Pleasant Ridge, was, you know, did we call the right people, did we call at the right time, that kind of, that kind of thing when it comes to kind of an unusual incident such as this. So I wanna bring Chief Sullivan up to the podium to please talk a little bit more about the role that a resident can play if they were ever to, if this incident were to occur again, not only with this company, but with another company, odd smells and things like that, so we're all very clear on, on kind of how we called, but then also how others can do it as well.
Mr. Mayor, Council, the DEQ staff would like any reports from anybody on any kind of odor complaint to go directly to their dispatch at 1-800-292-4706. The DEQ will then, from their dispatch, contact Rebecca Loftus, who is the environmental quality analyst that works for the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, Air Quality Division. They also have a Water Quality Division, so they're two separate divisions that could both look at the same facility. However, anytime anyone smells anything odor-wise, gas-wise, that they think is natural or propane gas and that, they should immediately call 911 or the Ferndale Dispatch at 248-541-3650 first, before calling the DEQ, so we can come to make sure it's not an immediately life-threatening situation where explosion could occur, there's no oxygen problem. We deal with odors and gas leaks weekly, therefore, we have very experienced and well-trained in this area of sniffing out the problem, as we say. Each unit also carries four gas meters, which allows them to tell if there's enough oxygen in the environment as well as anything explosive, and then they can determine what we need to do to mitigate the problem at that point in time. So you still wanna call in the fire department. We also call the DEQ. There was a hang-up with DEQ getting out to their field staffers for about an hour on their part of it, but they realized that and have to straighten that out, so that Rebecca gets the immediate call. Anytime there's any kind of danger, if you smell anything, you should immediately leave the area, don't contact anybody, get out of the smell, get to a area that doesn't smell, and make your call from there in case this is a toxic or dangerous gas. From that point, the best protection for anybody in these situations are three things, and it doesn't matter if it's a biological, radiological, or a chemical weapon, or discharge leak, or otherwise, it's time, distance, and shielding. The less time you spend exposed to it, the further distance you can get away from it, and anything that can shield you, which in the case of gases and that, would be SCBA or self-contained breathing apparatus, even filtered masks won't work because the gas can pass through the filters. So, those things work no matter what it is, that's our three basic rules on what we're dealing with, so. Let us know, and we will come and take care of and measure and see what's going on, and then DEQ will be immediately notified by us, but feel more than free as citizens to call them directly, as well as the EPA. And apparently, the EPA oversees Michigan DEQ, so if you're not feeling you're getting enough satisfaction there, they said today in our conference call, go ahead and call the EPA and file a complaint there.
So I think it too, I think that there was some confusion, too, of, you know, should we have called 911, and that's what we wanna clarify, you should always call 911 first, but they did indicate that it was, it would be good for residents to call the DEQ as well, because I think that the more that they hear from the residents, the more, I believe that the residents' calling was probably one of the main reasons why there's going to be public comment.
More volume.
For sure, with this permit, so that was very important.
They see the volume of calls instead of our 911 dispatch center seeing the volume of calls.
They also gave us the name of somebody that we're supposed to be able to get in contact with that talks more about, not just, it's more not for the compliance, but what exactly did that smell emit, and are, were we, are we okay, or were we okay, and that kind of thing. So as soon as we get more information on that, we will definitely provide that information, but again, always call 911 first.
Yes, we wanna mitigate any immediately threatening to life hazards.
So, Chief, let me ask you just to be clear, and I'm not sure I know this myself, if there's this foul odor in the neighborhood like it happened, you want them to call you 911 or fire dispatch? If you smell a gas odor in your house, would you call Consumers Energy first?
No, you would call the fire department first.
Or you still, still you first?
Because, first of all, walking across the carpet, as we're all into winter and the heaters are on, you get the static spark, that can set off a gas explosion. So you shouldn't touch any lights or phones, picking up the phone can create a little micro spark inside the phone, even though they're all digital and that now, that micro spark could ignite the gas explosion. So you should leave the environment and call from another place and say, "My house is filling up with gas," or "It smells like gas." The problem with the Polar Tech is the chemicals they use are very close to the additives Consumers puts into natural gas so that we can smell it. Natural gas does not smell that way, it is a chemical additive to make you nauseated and bother you, so that you are aware there is a natural gas leak. Otherwise, it's colorless, odorless, it just fills up and either chokes out the oxygen and then kills you, or it lights up and blows everything into kingdom come.
Chief, I got a request from Sean O'Brien in Pleasant Ridge to ask, what has our history been with Polar, and have we had similar problems like this in the past?
Yes.
And what have we done to, you know, try to make it better?
We have dealt with Polar for many years, they've always, on any type of complaint, have been responsive to it and immediately done things to try and mitigate the issue. Apparently, on this one, a guy was cooking up a tank of waste oil, brought it up to 170 degrees, and they add a flecking agent to it, they let it go for a certain period of time and shut it down. He left and never shut it down. So it reached like 200 degrees and set off all this steam, which allowed... So, it reached like 200 degrees and set off all this steam, which allowed the smell to permeate the neighborhoods. I was coming out of the Oxford Inn with my wife, and she thought their outdoor patio was leaking natural gas. And I said, "No, that's Polar Tech." She says, "What's Polar Tech?" I said, "It's this company in Ferndale, but I can already tell by the additive smell that it's not natural gas." And it was permeating the whole area, so about 10 minutes later, I got a call from the captain that they were dealing with a Polar Tech problem.
Can you recall or release this significantly you could smell all the way into Royal Oak or through Pleasant Ridge?
It really is prevailing winds and weather conditions, because I don't know if, you know, I live in Pleasant Ridge, but I've gotten downriver smells from the sulfur mines and that into the area. It just depends on how far it carries and then the cool air, warmer, and if it drops down. So, this seems to be a bigger area release in one spot because he left the valve on and it was a tank that they were adding flocking agent to.
And do we know how, I mean, quantities, what was released, or have they gotten to that level of?
No. The- what they were testing about, what the city manager was talking about, is they're testing the oil in its raw form that was put into that tank to be dealt with and seeing what that would do at those temperatures and that at the DEQ. But lab-wise, she said it may be two to three weeks before that it comes back. But then they'll be able to say if anything extremely health hazard-wise was released at that temperature at that time with this type of oil.
I have a question.
Sure.
Thanks. Along the lines of what Scott was just mentioning, my- my friends in the neighborhood just south of Polar and my dad, whose machine shop is just north of Polar, have been dealing with all sorts of strange smells and things falling from the sky from Polar for many, many years. And the answer from the Department of Environmental Quality is either they're able to do it, call the fire department, we'll determine if there's a problem, and generally, they're operating within their parameters, or keep track of it. We want to know when you smell this, if you're the neighborhood that's most affected, which is generally right in that nine and Hilton area. But then there isn't ever any action taken. So, I am wondering if you and the city manager and the city manager from Pleasant Ridge and all of us, if we can persuade the Department of Environmental Quality to hold a public hearing here. I think it's very important for them to come here and hear residents rather than expecting residents to go to Lansing.
Well, it seemed to-
I think it's a reasonable request of us to make.
It seemed to me that when she explained that, or Chris explained, the leader of the unit, that it's a 30-day public comment sector, that you could request them, and I believe that you can request public hearings to be localized.
That would be wonderful.
So, it's a 30-day period, so somewhere in that 30-day period.
You could help us with that. That would be wonderful, because I know that there are a lot of people in that neighborhood who literally tracked things for years and then didn't see any- any action come of it. So, for them to be able to talk with the- with the DEQ, I think would maybe help resolve some of their lingering resentment towards the agency.
And the contact that April had mentioned, we're going to be making contact with- this doctor is one who would determine if these things are serious health hazard or not. So, we'll be finding out from him immediately what he knows if there's anything concerned about. I think, though, in the realistic, long-term view of it, from what Councilman Galloway was saying, we've had problems in the years gone by. There's nothing in EPA federal law that they're violating.
Right.
So, there- and they actually aloof to that today, that there is no shutting them down unless there is an immediate provable health hazard coming out of that facility, and it's proven that it's coming from that facility. There's no way anybody can shut them down.
It's so rare that you get something that you smell in Pleasant Ridge or all the way up to Royal Oak, but the repeated exposure of the- of the people right in that neighborhood is something that I know they would like to talk with the DEQ about.
And one of my biggest concerns, as well as many of my officers, is that it smells so much like a natural gas leak that people start to get complacent with it, oh, it's another Polar Tech thing. The worry is, is that there could be a really serious dangerous gas leak being masked because Polar's releasing at the same time.
Absolutely.
And if they don't call us, then nobody's sniffing it to see if there really is a life threat or a life hazard within the odor you're smelling. So, it's always key to call us. It seems to bother some. We're used to dealing with it. We've been dealing with it for years, but definitely call.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks for your time. Anything to add?
All right. I don't, other than, I mean, I- I wouldn't want to give the impression that Polar Environmental is not cooperating. Everything we've understood is that they're working with the MDEQ. They take this seriously. They've said that. And so, I don't want people to give the impression that they're not because they are. And at this point, we don't have any evidence that there has been a health or safety compromise. The test would show that, but I mean, I don't want to alarm people. It's- it may just be a really, really, really annoying smell that we need to get under control, but we'll know more as the tests come in. So, I just want to say that. And then, I don't know, any of our friends from Pleasant Ridge, if you have anything to add, or just wanted to say hello?
How you doing?
Good evening.
My name's Al Hazen. I live in Pleasant Ridge. And I just want to thank the city of Ferndale and the city of Pleasant Ridge for addressing this. I've been calling on this particular issue since I moved into Pleasant Ridge in 2003. I've called the Ferndale Fire several times over the year, years, and this is the first time that I knew to take it to a different level. And I recognize that, you know, it's probably a problem for the EPA or the DEQ. But I just want to thank you for bringing it to our- to-
You're welcome and thanks for coming by.
Thank you.
And thank you for calling on it.
Yeah. Thanks. Commissioner?
Hello, Mayor, City Commissioner, Councilpeople. Thank you for welcoming us tonight on this issue, and thank you for attaching the seriousness that it deserves. One thing I would like to do is assure the residents of both our communities that my experience over the last week has been that the governing unit in Ferndale and the governing unit in Pleasant Ridge are taking this issue very seriously, and I want to assure both of our communities' residents that, you know, we're all working on this issue and we want to see, you know, good things come of it. I do want to reemphasize that, as a newly-elected representative in the city of Pleasant Ridge, I was contacted immediately by many of my constituents that, you know, what we all encountered on December 2nd was a very noxious smell, myself included. It really enveloped our entire neighborhood. So, that really immediately constituted my impression that something different and abnormal was going on. I do want to compliment Chief Sullivan and the Ferndale Fire Department for their response on this issue. And I do want to join the chief in emphasizing to the residents of both communities that the proper thing to do immediately if you have a suspicious smell is to call 911. This is Ms. McGrath, and I had kind of shared, you know, I asked on the conference call about, you know, protocol and what our citizens should be thinking, and I think it is vitally important that we emphasize, you know, 911 should be your first call. Beyond that, though, I do want to join Al in kind of commenting on the educational process that I've, you know, gone through in the last week and just make sure the residents of both communities know how much powerful a call to the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality has. I was impressed, as Ms. McGrath mentioned, that each registered complaint has to be answered by that department, and they take all those calls very seriously. When Consumers Energy was on my street, I talked to one of their technicians, and he indicated at that point, this was around 8:30, 8 o'clock, that he had already had three- he knew of over 300 calls to their company. One thing I would love the residents to kind of take away from this is that a call to Consumers Energy is proper and warranted, but if you take that extra time after, you know, you're sure that your house isn't going to blow up, that you make that call to the state agency. Because I think, as Al and myself have seen and Mrs. Loftus at the Department of Environmental Quality reassured us that the more residents who respond to this issue, the greater movement we'll see on it. So, yeah, I just want to thank you, and I look forward to both communities working together on this issue to reassure our citizens that everything's in compliance at Polar and, you know, that we live in safe neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this issue now? I think it'd be appropriate if you- you don't- wouldn't have to wait a call to audience. All right. Appreciate it. Thanks. Thank you, City Manager. Our next presentation, we also added to the agenda as Presentation E, is our County Commissioner. Commissioner Covey, I know there's a- there's a hot issue going on in Oakland County.
Yes, there is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and greetings, Council and staff. I actually had not intended to- to come back and see you this month in December, but I'm afraid I bring you ill tidings from Oakland County Commission tonight. While most of us are out trying to enjoy the holidays and buy gifts and prepare for Christmas or Hanukkah or Kwanzaa, the- there's been some behind-the-scenes nefarious machanizations going on up in Lansing. We have learned just this week that leaders of the Oakland County Republican Party have been working with Michigan Depart- or the Michigan House of Representatives to drastically change the way Oakland County government functions and is elected. House Bill 5187, which was introduced last week by a former county commissioner, among other things, would reduce the number of county commissioners in Oakland County from 25 to 21 without a vote of the people. In addition, this bill would throw out the maps that were created after the redistricting. Every 10 years, as people know, our legislative districts, county commission districts, congressional districts are redrawn to balance with population. This process has been going on in Oakland County for many, many decades. It is a well-established legal bipartisan- bipartisan process. It costs money. We finished it. It was vetted, it went to the courts, and was blessed by Michigan courts. This bill would throw out those maps, and worst of all, in my opinion, it was- is that it would allow the current sitting county commissioners, who are in the majority in Pontiac, who are Republicans, to redraw their own districts. What that means, of course, is that incumbents can draw a district to favor their own reelection. To me, it's absolutely unheard of. I hate to bring this bad news to you, but it is- in my 13 years now of working in government locally, it, to me, is the most unethical, the most unfair, the most undemocratic situation that I have ever seen. I did draft a real quick resolution that I would ask the city council to consider. I don't know whether we can stop this or not. This is the kind of thing that turns people off of politics. It has partisanship, it has secrecy, it has unfairness in it. But we are trying to get resolutions tonight as we sit here, the city of Hazel Park, the city of Royal Oak, next week, Madison Heights tonight is voting on similar resolutions. We're going to be lobbying our senators, state senators, and certainly the governor as well. The media's been covering this, so rather than go on, I'll just share that with you. And I did present, Councilman Galloway, I know has a copy of the resolution, or if you have any questions for him. But I guess I am, after one year of being on the commission, I can't tell you how disappointed I am at this, but I'm not going to give up. I will, you know, join with you and everyone else and try to fight this so that we can have a fair process. Otherwise, we're looking at a decade of elections in our county that really will be stacked against the people here in- in this part of the county.
Appreciate it. So, to- 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 to-[1492.33]
There would be legal ramifications that might be able to be brought forward next year as well. But basically, we're letting... We are asking people to spread the word, let the governor know, their state senators, particularly Republican state senators.
I was heading back to the office when the sponsor of this bill, Brad Jacobson, from northern Oakland County, was on WDT FM. The interview is still available on the website of WDTFM.org. And I was just absolutely shocked at... He didn't even sort of apologize or try to cover it up. It was just blatantly... He disagrees with the emerging majority of folks in Oakland County who vote Democratic, and he wanted to subvert that through, really, behind-the-scenes, you know, just technical changes to the way we, you know, make decisions or how we form that commission. It was something that I expect to hear from Eastern European or Russian despot, not American legislators. It was really pretty frightening to me. So, you know, I'm happy to move that we adopt the following resolution and forward it on to all of the Michigan state senators and Governor Snyder. Whereas Oakland County has a longstanding and well-established protocol for redistricting its county commission seats each decade that strives for bipartisanship and is made up of elected officials, including the county clerk, the county treasurer, and the county prosecutor, along with the chairs of both Republican and Democratic parties. And the Oakland County redistricting process has been completed, vetted, and ruled proper by Michigan courts and was done in a timely, transparent, and legal manner. And the process itself ensures local control and includes Oakland County voters' input through elections of three of the five members of that redistricting committee. And the biannual Oakland County commission elections are just months away, with new districts and maps that ensure representation of all residents of Oakland County, including minority residents. And last-minute partisan political maneuvering by Lansing State House of Representative Republicans threaten local control and voters' intent through House Bill 5187 that would eliminate four Oakland County commission seats and would negate the legally adopted proportionment plan now in place with a new system that allows current Oakland County commissioners to redraw their own districts in 2012 for the elections in 2012. And the author of House Bill 5187, Brad Jacobson, has admitted on public radio that part of his reasoning and goal of his bill would be to prevent any possible election of additional Democratic county commissioners in 2012, because he does not agree with some Democratic policies and proposals. And House Bill 5187 violates the spirit of home rule and local control, as well as using blatant political power to unfairly impose a partisan system to favor one party over the other. And House Bill 5187 could be used to violate rules designed to protect minorities from being marginalized in political boundary setting. And that House Bill 5187 would allow current sitting majority county commissioners to redraw their own districts just prior to their elections in 2012. Therefore, be it resolved that this city council, Ferndale, in the strongest terms vigorously opposes this last-minute partisan attempt to impose new state rules on our county that removes local control, negates the actions of county voters, forces a new system of redistricting without our consent, and places the ability of drawing new county commission lines in the very hands of the current sitting majority county commissioners, which is unethical, unfair, and possibly illegal while undermining people's support and belief in democracy itself. And we call on the Michigan Senate and the governor of the state of Michigan to oppose this bill.
Support. Support. Moved by Galloway and supported by Baker. Is there discussion on this item?
I think it's already been said.
I mean, Commissioner, you know, I was in your job for eight years, and I served with Brad Jacobson and some of the other folks who supported this. And, you know, we had our partisan games, but this is the most blatantly political and outrageous stunt that they've pulled in my time as well. And I would also mention that if you want... You know, if people are angry enough and want to call somebody, the county executive is not totally guiltless in this. There's no way that this happens in Lansing without the county executive, Al Brooks Patterson, blessing. And it would be a good reminder to him as well that Democratic principles trump any sort of temporary partisan gain that they think that they might gain from this maneuver.
You're exactly right, Mayor. And, you know, I went in a little wide-eyed and maybe a little naive, but I tried to reach across the aisle. I've tried to make friends with the Republicans. You know, sometimes we all didn't get along here, but, boy, it's nothing compared to what's up there. I'm just so surprised. But I should mention, too, that we are asking people to come to the commission meeting this Thursday morning at 9:30. I know we're all trying to address our Christmas cards and put up the decorations, but I think that's partly why they pulled this, is that they know that we're all trying to have lives and this is somewhat boring or somewhat mundane, but it will affect this county for the next 10 years. So please feel free. We have public comment up there, just like you do here, 1200 North Telegraph. And I know the media's coming, and watch, because I think there's going to be some excitement.
And if you energize the Occupy folks that have been popping up around?
Well, that's, you know, that's... We have a lot of things going on, and that's something in our back pocket or that we're thinking about at this point. It's going to be... We're in it for the long haul. And we'll know by Thursday night whether this fight continues through courts and other actions. So cross your fingers. And I thank you for allowing me to bring this at the last minute. Sorry about that, Clerk Talbot. And I know you've got tons on your plate all the time. Thanks for having me. I'm going to stick around for a public comment.
May I have a call to roll?
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you kindly, Mrs. Council.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right. Later than usual, we have arrived at item five, call to audience. I appreciate everyone who has stuck around with us for an hour and a half of conversations about odors and traffic and commissioners and all sorts of things. But called to audience, as you know, is a half hour now, more time later if we need it. Each person, if you'd state your name and your address, or write your address on the sheet in the back so that our clerk has it, you get three minutes to talk about any item that is not on the agenda. Mary Schustabauer.
Good evening. My name is Mary Schustabauer. I live at 2634 Highland. And while we have had many heady topics already in tonight's meeting, I'm here to tell you what I did on my summer vacation. Now, I'm not going to tell you about the sights that I went to see or the beaches or anything like that, but earlier in this evening's presentations, Jessica Stilger from the school district mentioned that on December 19th, the school board will be doing kind of a final action to get a bond proposal on the ballot on February 28th. And I wanted you to know that that bond proposal did not pop up out of nowhere. It wasn't just a wild idea in somebody's brain. But I spent nine weeks of my summer chairing a committee of citizens that... And it was a wide-ranging committee of people from all over our community that looked at this bond proposal and did a lot of studying to first understand how bonds work, to see what the needs of our district were, to update our buildings, what things needed to be on that list, and to what things could we do to protect past investments that we've made in our buildings, because they obviously need to be kept up. And then also to look at what state-of-the-art facilities do our students need and deserve here in the Ferndale School District. And so our committee unanimously recommended to the school board that they place this bond proposal on the ballot. And one of the things that I think it was kind of amazing to learn, and I am only tonight, you know, going to give you kind of a hint of all the financing of this, but because the Ferndale School District already pays into the school bond loan fund from past bonds, if we pass this new bond, everyone's taxes would go up $0. What it would do is it would extend the amount of time that we're paying into the school bond loan fund. So that's just a preview of future education, but thank you for letting me come tonight and give you that preview.
Thanks, Mary. Appreciate it. Good evening, Sherri.
Good evening. Sherri Wells, 315 West Troy. This is a thank you on behalf of us Rotarians that we had, again, just like the library prom did, we had some wonderful business owners who have stepped up to work with and for the nonprofits in our community. In the case, it was the pancake breakfast. It was last Saturday morning. We had extended hours, and in fact, the Fern Care Board decided to have breakfast before their board meeting by coming to our pancake breakfast. We had Petite's Cheesecake, which is further down Nine Mile Road into Oak Park. We had Michael Hennes from How's By You, and Dean Bach from Dino's Lounge brought in some of the food that we ate. Hennes brought the sausage, and Dino brought the eggs, which meant we were able to make a lot more money for our student achievement awards. And in fact, we had students there. We had two of our student award winners that were at our greeting table, and we had entertainment provided by the Ferndale High School Langley Trains Quartet, which, as I understand, were two freshmen and two sophomores playing three violins and a cello, and it was just beautiful background music that people enjoyed and clapped at. It was just absolutely wonderful. In addition, Rotary was benefiting by the Girls Night Out. This is something that Blooms by JR Designs is also another one of our businesses that really strongly supports nonprofits. And at that night, it was the Rotary, the Relay for Life, and the Pink Fund all benefited from some of the activities that they had signed up for us to be able to do, and it was a wonderful girls' night out.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Julie Music, 497 West Troy. I have two things to talk about. First thing is, from the traffic study, there's one thing that was kind of left out. The alley behind Western Market is a one-way alley, but there's no sign on that alley until the driver is literally at Allen Road. So their first inclination is, oh, I'm on a one-way going the wrong way. I need to get out of here, which splits the driver right out onto the sidewalk, and that creates a dangerous situation, at least for me, several times when I was walking. So an addition of a couple other one-way signs where the drivers would be turning into that alley would be really helpful. That's one thing.
Good point.
And completely something different, Ferndale Adoption Network, which is located on Facebook, look us up at Ferndale Adoption Network, is having an outing on Saturday at the Emory. And if you want more details, you need to join our group, and you will see the details posted on the wall. It's an open group. All you have to do is request to join, and I'll click you in. And then we're also planning a bowling event over the winter break. So if you're interested in joining the Ferndale Adoption Network, that's for all parents who are adoptive parents or foster parents or considering the adoption process or foster process, please join us and find some support within your community. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing that. Commissioner, take two.
No, I'm wearing a different hat. I'm Craig Covey, member of the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Committee, and I'm here today with your green tips for December. Number one, your green tips for December. Number one, we ask...
I feel like this is like the David Letterman type... This is real... He's a real tip, right?
Uh-huh. Real tips. Not the top 10. We strongly suggest that people do not buy artificial fake plastic trees anymore. Most of them come from China, which, of course, hurts our economy, but they're also without regulations made with lots of toxins. And plastic, of course, comes from oil. So we suggest that to protect your kids, the pets, and your environment, you don't buy plastic trees unless you've already got one. We ask that you consider using natural decorations. Sometimes you can even get them from your own yard or from Peggy Snow's yard, but you can trim... I'm kidding on that. You can trim boughs.
She's not even here.
Bring in pine cones. And of course, that has that natural smell. If you want a tree, buy local. Again, Michigan, we have great trees here in Michigan. We suggest that you can reuse wrappings. You can certainly reuse boughs. You can reuse boxes from year to year. And again, that keeps it out of the waste stream. We suggest you do not buy the metallic glitter shiny papers, even though you might like those papers. I know that's what Councilman Lennon always buys for my present. Stay away from the metallic shiny stuff. Buy local. If you do get a cut tree, you can recycle that, either the city will recycle it or even in your own compost pile. For gifts, again, buy local products. When you're thinking about what to get your county commissioner for Christmas, something local or from Michigan. And finally, Christmas lights, which look great in our town all over tonight on the way here, they make them in LED now, so you can use less power. So those are your green tips. Everyone do have a very safe Christmas and a great holiday season.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well done. Appreciate it. Christina, you've had a busy weekend.
Yes, a very busy weekend, hence my casual attire today. So... But I wanted first to thank everybody, residents and all those who helped out, all of our volunteers for our Holiday Ice Festival and Winter Fest Market this past weekend. It's been just... I mean, it was a fabulous weekend. We had great weather for ice and wonderful turnout. And I do want to say that photos with Santa are online, so you can get those at downtownferndale.chutterfly.com. So they're up and loaded. And if you can't find your photo, please feel free to call the office, and we'll try to help you go through it. The other thing that I wanted to mention is we're not done with celebrating the holidays. We have another one this Thursday. It is Merry Midnight Madness. So our businesses will be open late on Thursday night, so come on out. A lot of them do their kind of their Christmas parties that night, as well as obviously holiday specials. And yes, the greenest thing to be is to be shopping local, and all of our lights downtown are LED.
Well, Christina, you know, I was going to say this at the end of the meeting, but I'll say it now since you're standing there. I mean, you guys have done a wonderful job with the Ice Sculpture Holiday Fest over the years, but you guys just took it to a new level. I know that having the Motor City Casino sponsorship was a big part of helping to get there, but with the Ferris wheel, which I can't imagine anyone in that temperature going up there, but it was crowded a lot.
I loved it.
And I know how much work it was for you. As, you know, for us, it's easy to just enjoy it, but you guys did just an awesome job of taking that whole project to another level this year. And, you know, just congratulations to you, all the volunteers, all the staff. Awesome, fun job.
Thank you. Thank you. It's one of our favorites, that's for sure.
You put my family on the shutterfly.
Because I knew that she would be okay with it.
Anyone else for call to audience? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen and Women, and everybody else. My name is Andrew. I've been a Ferndale resident my whole life, and things in society are starting to change, and there's things out there that youths need to get more involved, like myself. And there's an issue that I am directly affected by that seems to be happening throughout the whole nation and in the state and even in the local area. So I came here for two reasons. For one, I'd like to generate interest amongst all of you, because you are city leaders. And for two, I'd also like to propose something. What I'd like to propose is that Ferndale, being a progressive community that we are, is that me working with you or whoever you deem me to work with to have a medical marijuana convention at Gary Park, because this is an issue that's serious, and it's something that's happening, and I think that we need to sort things out with it, because the whole point of it was to provide medical relief to people, but also to not criminalize people. And I see that there's like a lot of confusion going on in politics. So one thing would to be, to like get a better understanding of things, and like that's why citizens like myself are coming to the government, because we... There's no point in having a division. We need to come together on every issue, but this is the particular issue that I'm bringing up. So I would like to talk to somebody, whomever that is, if that's you, Mayor, like a one-on-one or whomever. And I have a convention, though, but something that's serious, because there's getting like national attention. Isabella County, they ruled a court case about the whole law, and there is an article in the Washington Post about it. So like this is something that's affecting our whole nation, but we can start progressing this issue now, because this issue's not going to go away. So the people that are against it, they need to accept that. And the people that are for it, they need to also accept the fact that, you know, there has to be a meeting in the middle of the road. And basically, that's why I'm coming here, and I'd like to talk to some city officials about having a convention in the spring or so.
Well, Andrew, I appreciate you coming, first of all, and participating this way. And it's a timely issue, because the legislature and the Attorney General are right now rewriting the rules around the law that Michigan passed a few years ago. I want to suggest that you connect with our city manager, because she's, you know, we get here every two weeks, but she's here on a day-in and day-out basis. She really runs the show, and she would be probably the most appropriate first start for you to figure out what this might look like or how we might connect.
Go about it.
So if you can get her your contact information, I think that'd be a great first start.
So this is something that we could... It could be a possibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can work on it.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, we're happy to talk to you about it and flesh out, you know, more about what you're thinking about.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
I'll contact her later, then. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Appreciate it. Yep. Anyone else for call to audience this evening? All right. Here seeing none, we'll close call to audience and move on to our consent agenda for tonight. Consent agenda items are things that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless something is pulled from the consent agenda. I will read the items on the consent agenda for this evening. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings held November 28th, 2011. Approval to proclaim, excuse me, November 19th as Arbor Day in the city of Ferndale. That was last month, so that'll be after the fact, I suppose. Approval to amend the home renewal systems contract to expire June 30th, 2012, and authorization for the mayor and city clerk to sign the amendment. D, approval to adopt the resolution to waive the recapture of program year 2009 minor home repair community development block grant funds in the amount of $960. Approval to accept the bid by Synergy Wireless to upgrade current eligible equipment, supply new equipment, and to meet the narrowbanding requirements of the FCC and MedCom requirements of the state of Michigan as authorized, and authorization for $25,667 in cost for equipment and services to be charged to the capital improvement fund as submitted by our fire chief. And finally, approval of the bills and payrolls as certified by the city manager, subject to the review of the council finance committee. I don't see our city clerk, who walked out, but that's all right. We can carry on without him. Are there any changes or anything from the consent agenda that council would like to see pulled this evening? Otherwise, a motion would be...
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Baker. Are there any... Is there any discussion, comments, or questions on the consent agenda this evening from council or anyone in the audience? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Councilmembers Lennon? Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Now on to the regular agenda. Item A, appointment of Christopher Roan as alternate member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending December 31st, 2012. Madam Clerk, do you have anything to say about that?
Well, Mr. Roan submitted an application. Our community and economic development director, Mr. Delacorte, reviewed it and deemed that he had the proper credentials, at which point you, Mayor, also reviewed it. So it is appropriately before council, and this will be an alternate member. We have... Both of our former alternate members have moved up into regular seats on the board, and the alternate positions are very important, because this is a board that actually makes decisions, and they must have a quorum, and they must meet in a timely matter, so...
Great. And as you mentioned, this is a mayoral appointment with council approval. I did look over his resume. He seems well-qualified, and I appreciate his willingness to serve on this uncompensated board, so...
To the chair. I've known Chris for a couple of years, and I couldn't be more pleased with his hand-raising to join the board. And we definitely use alternates, I think, every meeting that we have them, so I'm sure he'll be active.
So would you like to make the most?
I would. I move to confirm the appointment of Christopher Roan as an alternate member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for the term ending December 31st, 2012.
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Lennon. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call it roll.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That appointment is adopted. Regular agenda. Item B is the city hall police station building HVAC system. This was something that was on our agenda several weeks ago, and we asked for additional review and comment. And so city manager, do you want to introduce this item?
I will. Director Fatides from DPW has brought this forward actually a couple of times, and each time we've had more or further discussion regarding this issue. So I will kind of attempt to summarize where my recommendation is regarding the HVAC system. Back in the summer, our HVAC system for the city hall and the police station, it failed, and we need to get a new one. And in the meantime, during that process of trying to determine the next course of business, in terms, the city manager, Mark Wolandweber, had also suggested possibly looking into more of a green solution, taking the parallel that we did over in the library. So what we did was director, Public Works Director Fatides, had asked Stevens to do kind of a rough idea of what it would take to do the, kind of we call it, the green solution for the HVAC system. And so when he brought that... And so when we brought that back to council, it was significantly more expensive than doing what I refer to as the general HVAC system, replacing the old one that we have. At that point, council was interested in learning a little bit more about what our payback would be, and going a little further with the study. So what we did was two things. I had Byron ask Siemens to talk about a payback for just a new updated system. Right now, I think our system's about 50 years old, and Byron can interrupt me at any time when I'm going in the wrong direction. And then, in order for us to truly know a payback for geothermal, and to actually know the true cost of a geothermal system, it would actually cost money to go further with the study. So what I did was, Siemens was able to give us an idea that moving to a, just getting a new normal HVAC system, that just in electricity and use of utility, we would save about $17,000 a year. So I just decided that rather than move forward with the full-on study, that I just doubled that for geothermal, and it'd be a potential savings for $34,000 a year. So the payback for a general system would be in about five years, and a payback, or a geothermal, it could be anywhere from 12 years, but it could be longer. As I was writing this memo, I could feel the breeze coming through the windows in my office. And so there was just a lot kind of going, a lot going into this whole process. So what I'm actually recommending is that we actually really need to take a look at our sustainability of our facilities as a whole, and with a plan of action, as part of a whole plan. I think that there's opportunities to create an energy revolving loan fund, whereas we do, do green initiatives within our buildings, that we can pay ourselves back to do even more projects. Unfortunately, with summer coming, believe it or not, as it's 30 degrees out, we don't have that kind of time to create this plan of action for sustainability for all of our, for all of our facilities. But I'm recommending that we move forward with the general HVAC system, and to take that opportunity to see some of those savings and put it back into the building, looking at new windows, making sure that we have the right insulation, things of that nature, but not only in this building, in other buildings as well. We can definitely move forward with doing a formal study on the geothermal, if that is something that council's interested in. But I just think that without an entire plan and sustainability with our facilities, and just knowing that, you know, again, literally could feel the breeze coming through the window, that we have a lot more to do, this building, to even prep it for a normal HVAC system to have that savings, let alone the geothermal. So at this point, both Director Fatides and I are recommending the typical normal HVAC system to be put into City Hall before summer. However, again, if council wishes to continue moving forward, we can. Siemens can work with us to do a more comprehensive study on what a true value would be, or the cost for the geothermal, as well as a true payback. That's where we are at this point, again, is recommending the general HVAC system.
Through the chair, I just have a quick, when you say that the general normal HVAC system, it's still, it's an upgrade, it's something new, and it's much, much more efficient than what we had before. So characterizing it as sort of the non-green solution, I think is a little bit of a misnomer, because we are dramatically increasing the efficiency of this building before we do anything with the shell of the building, just by upgrading the mechanical.
Yes, once you look at that.
And if I understand your recommendation, because this new system would save us approximately $17,000 a year, there is the opportunity to capture those savings and put that into a potentially a revolving loan fund to fund the other sort of conservation efforts that we would need here.
There's a common practice that's happening among many governmental entities, is that as they start to make upgrades in lighting, and in these kind of initiatives, new windows and things of that nature, they take that, the captured savings, and continue to put it back into that same fund to continue to do green and other efficiency projects. And it kind of, at some point, your payback is, you've made all your repairs, and now you actually are saving a ton of money, so.
And rebudgeted, by the way, on the current utilities, not on projected savings?
Correct, yeah.
So this would not affect our budget at all?
No, in fact, we have budgeted for the system, and this, we originally had, in the original request, just to clarify, the courthouse across the street as well, but because of the kind of unknown nature of where District Court is going to go, we did ask Siemens to take a look at that system, and so that we could get another year with that system. But if, once we determine that, you know, Circuit Court, or District Court is remaining where it is, we can always talk about that. But there was no necessary cost savings by doing them both together either. So there has been budgeted.
Additional questions available?
I just have comments, but I can wait until the motion's on them.
I would move to approve the fee proposal of $83,600 of Siemens Building Technologies to retrofit the HVAC system of the City Hall/Polic Station, and to charge the expense to the Public Improvement Fund Capital Outlay Account Number 445000977.
Support.
So moved by Baker, supported by Piana. Now, comments, questions, concerns?
Well, basically, we have to fix things that break. It's that simple. This is completely, has no more useful life in it, so we, for the comfort of our staff who do hard work, we need to go ahead and replace it. But I do think Ms. McGrath has been right to pull us in a direction of looking, how do we do capital improvements for the rest of our buildings as we start fixing bits and pieces along the way, and have a better strategy of how to deal with these. And I do want to encourage council, and the DPW director and the city manager, to look at the Southeast Michigan Regional Energy Office as a potential partner, and looking at how the city can evaluate, audit, and create energy management plans. The Southeast Michigan Regional Energy Office was created by small governments, so, who cannot afford to hire their own energy management director, like the city of Ann Arbor did, to save the money over time. And so the Regional Energy Office serves in that capacity. So the city has been a verbal member of the REO, but not an active participant, and taking advantage of the grant opportunities, grant writing, and other partnerships that come through, working with the REO, which is a partner of the Michigan Municipal League and DTE. So, and the Better Buildings for Michigan that piloted in Ferndale was part of the Regional Energy Office. So that's my statement.
Further comments or, on this item? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Agenda item C, consideration to adopt a precinct boundary alterations. And I believe there was an Elections Commission meeting this evening, where this was discussed, is that right?
There was, Your Honor. In accordance with election law, the Election Commission needs to approve changes to precinct boundaries. The council needs to approve changes to polling locations. What we've done, as a result of the census, as Commissioner Covey pointed out earlier, voting districts are reapportioned for federal, state, and county, or voting districts. City of Ferndale, the county commission issued notwithstanding, are seeing changes in our US Republican State Senatorial Districts. State law requires that we send out notices to every registered voter of these changes. Well, in, I believe it's 2007, we reduced the number of our voting precincts from 16 to nine. And with the reduction in our population and our number of registered voters with the last census, we see that we can now reduce them even further to seven, redraw the precinct lines a little more straight and clear, more clearly marked, and still be within the statutory limits for the number of registered voters in each precinct. The reason we're proposing to do this are many, but it is definitely an economic and efficiency issue. We will reduce labor costs, we will reduce our warranty costs on our machines, we will reduce our supply costs. For the immediate future of the 2012 elections, where we like to put more than the standard number of precinct inspectors in each precinct to deal with the extra turnout, we'll be able to keep our staffing costs static, because we will just simply redirect those workers affected into the remaining precincts. And because we are already having to mail out new registration cards to notify all voters, we can combine that notification in one, which is another cost savings. These changes would not go into effect until the August primary in 2012, so for the February 28th presidential primary, we will remain at the nine, and then this, like I said, would go into effect in August. The Election Commission did approve the changes as I recommended.
All right. Are there questions?
I move to adopt the precinct boundary alteration plan as presented by the city clerk.
Support. As always, our city clerk makes a strong and clear case for finding efficiencies in a system that we thought we'd wrung most everything out of. So I appreciate you being on top of this, Sherilyn.
Moved by Piana, supported by Baker.
I have to actually thank my staff. They were the ones who got this plan into place last year. And we had it ready to go when the county and state suddenly said, okay, now you have two weeks to get this done, before the county then said, wait, hold up, we've got to wait and see what happens. But regardless, I don't think that whatever happens with this House bill that Commissioner Covey talked about, I don't think it's going to affect our precinct boundaries. I think we'll be able to keep them. So we are, we will be a step ahead and ready to go into August.
Sure, it doesn't have anything to do with our population, which is what our boundaries have to do with, right?
Correct.
I guess I did have a couple of questions. And just to ask if you had considered these things. By the looks of this map, Precinct 1 is, I see a big arrow going to Coolack, correct?
Correct.
So, is it problematic at all that, and I, you know, I hate these artificial divides of our city as being northwest and southwest, and all that stuff, however, that the northwest section of Ferndale, which historically has the greatest number of people actually voting, maybe not registered voters, but turnout, would no longer have a voting precinct in the northwest section of Ferndale?
You're talking about by?
If I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly.
The new Precinct 1, which would be north of Nine Mile, west of Woodward?
Yes.
Would be voting at Coolack Community Center. Precinct 1 is not, does not see our highest turnout within the city.
Well, that's true, the Coolack Center precinct has probably surpassed that.
And I will explain the reason why we are suggesting doing away with using Roosevelt Primary as a polling location, is their limited amount of parking, and their historical attitude of non-cooperation with us. They like to put us in out-of-the-way places, their custodial staff, it's not very helpful. This last time, a week before the election, they called and asked if we would mind if they moved us into a hallway. The election prior to that, they scheduled us in the library, and then had a book fair in the library at the same time. I think that the voters in Precinct 1 are better served by traveling slightly out of their precincts to Coolack Community Center for the additional space and parking to accommodate the numbers in that precinct.
Coolack is the one that has been the highest voter turnout, correct? Or we're really, I mean, we're really going to add a lot of folks there.
No, we're removing those folks down to?
Removing those folks down to the high school.
Ah, okay, all right.
So the new Precinct 2, which is west of Woodward, and between Nine Mile and Marshall, would then vote at Ferndale High School, which again, has been very cooperative and tends to have ample space. They're always willing to put us in the common area, enclosed school, if necessary, for the larger elections. And then we would maintain tapped education for the new Precinct 3, which is south of Marshall, west of Woodward.
Okay. And then my other question was just around the timing.
Mm-hmm.
I'm trying to think of what may be on the ballot in August of next year. Seems like maybe not much.
2012?
2012.
That's all of the?
That would be the state rep?
Yes.
But?
That's everything except president, the primary for everything except president for the federal state offices. That's usually the university regions.
But I don't expect this challenge to our state rep, or our county commissioner, or any of that. I guess my only point is, it could very well be that, that's a very light turnout election, and that the first time people experience this, experience this, and have to deal with this, is the presidential election in November, so.
Actually, we'll see higher turnout this August for the state primary than we typically do for local November and May schools, or past May school elections. So we'll see a fairly high, or a fairly decent turnout in August. And in addition, we'll be doing quite a bit of public education on the change in locations.
What is the, okay, so just in terms of timing, and you said we're ahead of other folks, but what is, what would be the downside, other than saving some dollars, I suppose, of waiting until after the presidential election?
The only downside would be not being able to piggyback on the already mandatory resending of registration cards to all of our voters. We have to do that.
We have to do that in advance of the presidential election?
In advance of the August primary, because of the reapportionment. So our voters are affected by the changes on the state and national level.
Okay.
So we can piggyback on that, and of course, like I said, save some money this election year. But other than that, we can redraw precinct boundaries.
Anytime.
Within 120 days of an August primary.
Well, that's a compelling reason to want to do it. I just, I want to encourage us to do as much education as possible, because?
It is on our calendar to do that immediately after the February 28th election, because we don't want to confuse voters, because they will still vote where they're currently voting.
Some of us are still getting used to going to the new one that we got four years ago. I myself, I'm going to a new one, okay? I'm glad I heard that. And I, even though it comes with your card, that's, that's one way, but we need to hit, I think, residents in multiple ways, to make sure that this is understood.
Hit the website, and cable, and the water bills, and every council meeting, and of course, our press is wonderful at covering things like this for us.
Counting on you, Jerry. All right, all right. That's, those are my questions. Any additional comments or questions?
I just wanted to say, I think that the council and the city that invested, per your recommendation, a couple of years ago to move to the computer system, and I think the efficiencies that we've invested are going to make this transition very easy. And I also know there's an increase in absentee voter ballots, so I think we'll see some balancing there as well. So if voters are concerned about having longer lines, which is expected at presidential, but maybe for the, for the off-presidential election, people don't have to be concerned about having extra wait time, so.
I agree. Councilman Piana, the electronic poll book has really significantly reduced wait times. We continue to train, and we continue to recruit younger and more computer-savvy election workers, which helps as well, so. We are doing what we can to make the voting process as quick and easy as possible for our residents.
You guys are well-trained. It's us voters who are trained as well, on where to go, so that's, that's my bigger concern.
We'll work with you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Item E, consideration of traffic recommendations and streetscape concepts for West Nine Mile Road between Libronoy and Pinecrest, West Nine Mile at Woodward Avenue and Troy and Allen. And obviously, we've had a presentation on this earlier, but just, pardon me? But, but what we're, we're asking for is a letter of support. Is that correct? Christina, do you want to just sort of be clear on, we're not, we're not necessarily approving this project today. You need a letter of support of this body to submit to the, well, why don't you go ahead and explain?
You confused me for a second, because I thought you said E. I was like, wait, D.
Oh, you know what I did say, E, I meant D. I, my apologies.
That's okay. That's why I looked confused for a second there. Yes, basically, what we're looking for is a letter of support that would really help to explain why it's so important that we're applying for this grant. Michigan Department of Transportation has a transportation enhancement grant that's available for streetscape improvements. Some of the things that they look for with those grants- Some of the things that they look for with those grants is things such as permeable surfaces and other amenities that really help to create a quality environment. But they also need to see the need for it. And also, we have already met with Vince Ranger, who reviews the applications. And he has stated that we really need to express how it's already part of some of the other projects that we have done in the past, as well as how it's going to be coincided in the future with the resurfacing project. He thought those would really help to get the application approved. And the other item that he had mentioned is really about the fact that, yes, this is downtown Ferndale, but to him, when he's looking at it visually, because there's so many large setbacks in that area, it's not the traditional sense of a downtown. So we really need to express the focus and the vision for that area. And the DDA has been working really hard over the, really, over the last eight years in developing a greater vision for that area that I think is now finally coming a little bit closer to fruition. But this does not bind us in any way. It's really just to submit with our application. And if we do get the application approved, then we would be coming back to council with a resolution that then the DDA and the city would be bound by that resolution.
All right. Thank you. And I apologize. I think I did read item E. So just for those of you following at home, we're on item D, which is the consideration of transportation enhancement grant letter of support for the West Nine Mile Streetscape Improvement Project Phase Four, just to be clear.
Correct. And if people are wondering Phase Four, how do you get Phase Four, West Nine Mile, the ones that we had done back in 98 through 2001, those were Phases One, Two, and Three.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion?
I have a question.
A question first, Chair.
Does MDOT give any additional weight or consideration to projects that are basically building on demonstrated economic impact? So
Oh, yes, definitely.
That was the one thing that wasn't quite explicitly stated in here, that we have a track record of demonstrated economic growth and impact in our downtown. So if there were, you know, one sentence to be added, it might be something to that effect. It just sort of emphatically says, this is a continuation of the city of Ferndale and Ferndale DDA's, you know, strong track record of economic growth and development.
I'll get that from you tomorrow.
Something like that. I tried to say it into the microphone.
They also give, I think, higher points to cities that have a complete streets ordinance.
Which is mentioned.
Yes, I know. I'm pretty excited about that. Of course.
Is there a motion?
Oh, I moved, sorry. I would move to approve the transportation enhancement grant letter of support for the West Nine Mile Streetscape Improvement Project Phase Four to be submitted with the city of Ferndale and DDA's application to the Michigan Department of Transportation and authorize the mayor to sign with the inclusion of a sentence about the demonstrated economic impact of downtown Ferndale.
Support.
Moved by Baker, supported by Galloway. Any additional comments?
One question. How much are you asking for?
Well, we're still working on the numbers. But conceptually, right now, for that portion that we would be applying for would be a little over $300,000. But that does, we're still working on the streetscape design amenities at this point. So that will be flushed out over the next month.
And this complements our DOT grant in 2013.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. This complements our federal DOT grant in 2013.
Yes, yes. The way that it's broken out is that with a TE grant, it's anything from the curb up to the building. So, and then the federal grant that you have already in place is for the resurfacing.
Are we doing any advocacy around ensuring that these transportation enhancement dollars are in the reauthorization of the federal council?
Yes. Yes. I have been watching that very carefully, as well as WA3 has been a strong proponent, obviously, for that. They have been a great partner in getting many of our grants supported through MDOT in the past.
If you need a resolution from us on that on the 19th, to go to the feds, maybe time?
Possibly. But I think at this point, you know, it's probably been three weeks or so, I think that things had subsided from that.
From wanting to move the money to the
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Christina, this portion of Nine Mile, from Pinecrest to Livernoy, is part of the downtown, technically, part of the DDA, not part of the TIF, correct?
No.
So you're not capturing dollars there?
No.
This grant would cover the repaving and the recurbing and the ADAs. Does it cover the streetscape and things that you envision there?
The TE grant would be the streetscape portion, not the resurfacing component.
Okay.
Where the resurfacing component is with the safety loo grant that you already have in place.
Okay. All right. That's where I was confused. So this would cover that?
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Yes. And typically, just so you know, in terms of the types of splits that they're doing right now, it used to be, as a standard, 80/20. So 80% the grant and 20% the local match. However, with any of those percentages, that does not include your preliminary or construction engineering. No grants ever include those. However, more as of lately, what they have been approving is typically a 65/35 split. And then also, there has been some other occasions where they've only done the 55/45 split. So the pot gets less, unfortunately, which means our local match end becomes more because you still have to obviously pay for construction and preliminary engineering. Good thing is, right now, the DDA is doing some of that preliminary engineering component. It's already built some of that into its budget. The one good thing that the DDA does have that it can go to when you're looking at that area is that we do have our levy that we assess, but it does not capture enough to do a big project of this size. We can do part of it. So those are still the things that we're working through. Obviously, you know, we want to see that improvement happen because when you look at the plan and you see what we have done before with our streetscapes and what has happened economically, that area needs it so desperately. And so we have to continue just kind of, you know, beating that drum to try to get that done and looking for as much support from other resources as possible to do that.
All right. Excuse me. Madam Clerk, you want to call the roll?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Christina. Now, item E, which I've already read once, but I'll read it again, just so everyone is clear. Consideration of traffic recommendations and streetscape concepts for West Nine Mile Road between Livernoy and Pinecrest, West Nine Mile Road at Woodward Avenue and Troy and Allen. And this obviously is what was presented to us earlier in the meeting.
Yep. And I can, if you would like, I can put this summary of the recommendations back up on the screen, if you would like, just to have that up there. You do have it obviously at your table.
We have it in our packets as well.
We have it pretty concisely in our motion.
Yeah, why don't you, just for the benefit of the public, we have copies in our packet. There we go. That is what you are asking us to, those recommendations are what you are asking us to adopt, minus, I guess, the loading zone.
Right, exactly.
So one, two, three, the fourth bullet under Troy and Allen should be struck, I suppose?
Yeah. Because we'll just take that bump out all the way to that drive apron.
Through the chair, I have a question?
Yes.
I had a question. I called our city manager earlier to let her know. I wanted to know, approving recommendations, what does that commit us to, if anything? And when will we be looking at the bigger picture of the way that the city's federal grant and anything that the DDA might potentially receive as a pass through from the state interacts? What's the timeline? I'm really looking at the budget interaction to see whether or not any of this, we can see that it's feasible on paper, but is it a spring budgeting season?
Well,
And what does this really commit us to when we approve?
We would probably be submitting our application, I mean, our plan was to submit in January. It's typically about six months for review, three to six. And obviously, we would want to be, for the West Nine Mile portion, we'd want to team that up with the 2013.
Right.
So you'd just probably most likely be floating over a couple of years anyways. And that's how the DDA has been looking at it as well. So you'd actually be looking at it, because the DDA is already doing preliminary engineering costs this year, you would then still have more and construction engineering costs than in fiscal year ending 2013. And then you'd probably have that in construction costs in fiscal year ending 2014.
Right. So this is a conversation that will start in the two-year fiscal year 2012, 2013 cycle that will start in, what, March or April?
Okay.
So committing to approving a traffic recommendation tonight, approving a traffic recommendation tonight just says that we agree with your assessment that this is the best course of action, should the funding be approved in the future.
Right. It's more for concept, that you agree with the concepts thus far. Obviously, they're not final design by any means.
And we're not allocating any budget right now.
Right, exactly. The DDA has been the only one that's been, you know, spending dollars in terms of the preliminary engineering and so forth, so.
Thanks. Is this appropriate time for public questions, too?
Mm-hmm.
In the presentation, you talked about the roundabout, and this doesn't list that. Can you just clarify, you know, for people who may be confused if the roundabout is being considered today, or where that fits into the big plan? And my second question is, if we are going to be talking about a roundabout, what was considered as far as the fire department and their ability to get out onto Nine Mile with the roundabout there?
I'll have Scott do the second part of that. But in terms of the roundabout, no, the recommendations at this point does not include the roundabout. I think there still has to be some additional study, as Scott had already mentioned. And we want to thoroughly go through that process and look at all of our options with that intersection as well. Ultimately, when the design comes down, we do need to know where we're going before we actually go down the path of construction documents, because that will modify how Nine Mile kind of flows to Livernoy, and how that might, may or may not adjust the lanes and on-street parking or sidewalks and so forth, so.
As far as the fire trucks, we would do the same thing as like we did on the Allen concept plans. We'll take them truck turning templates. We'll get the largest fire truck over there, get that truck turning templates, and make sure that it can get both north on Livernoy, out of the station, and right turn, go straight through, or go westbound. So we'll have to make sure they'll get there. And that's what a lot of that truck turning apron is. It's a raised platform towards the middle of the island for the back end of the trucks to drag on. So it'll be sized appropriately to get the fire trucks through there.
Are there a question to, maybe for Scott? He just made me think of it when you said sized appropriately for the trucks to get through. Are there any roundabouts, the only roundabouts that I've been on in Michigan are significantly larger than the one we would be looking at on Livernoy. Are there any of similar size, maybe in Ann Arbor, that we could literally drive out?
Derek may know better. There's one in Rochester Hills, Tinkin', and Sheldon. I believe that's a single lane out there.
So there is the potential for a real-world test?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks.
And just to be clear, you know, because we had TIA and others working on things, it was good to sort of throw in this concept of a roundabout, but it's not one of the three areas that we needed to immediately address. We don't have funding for a roundabout. It's very premature. We don't have other alternatives. So the roundabout is sort of in this because we had the opportunity to explore it. But it really isn't, just to be clear to residents, something that we've, you know, even are approving in concept at this point.
Right, exactly. And in regards to Troy and Allen, just to reiterate, the DDA already has it in its budget to do the improvements in that intersection.
Oh, the sidewalk improvements and the restripes?
Yes.
That's fantastic.
I have another question on another one of the recommendations. I was wondering why the recommendation to include a yield to pedestrians crossing Woodward sign at Woodward and Nine Mile was part of the recommendation for the right turn lane?
One, in terms of pedestrians crossing there, many times, I mean, and my staff is always ones that are complaining about trying to cross there because we're going back and forth between the office and city hall. But people are just not paying attention a lot of times. And as a pedestrian, it is very concerning when you're out there, you're not knowing who exactly is turning and who's not turning. And you do really have to look in, you know, in people's eyes whether or not they're seeing you at that intersection. It had come up during the focus groups that we have been holding over, you know, like the last year or so with our tax increment financing plan reviews. And it was one of those things that people were bringing up. And on our field analysis, our consultants who were working on that plan also noticed that that would be an opportunity there. So at that time, I had brought it up to TIA to look at that. And taking that into consideration, looking at what would be recommended. So that was specifically a sign. I mean, it might, hopefully, it helps people just to recognize that, yes, pedestrians are crossing. It doesn't help, a sign doesn't help the pedestrian in terms of crossing. However, hopefully, taking that right turn lane, that straight and right turn lane to only a right turn lane will help the pedestrian identify who's really turning right and who's really going straight.
I know it wasn't part of your study, but across the intersection in front of Como's is also a right turn lane. Did you receive a recommendation to put one there as well?
Yes. Actually, that was in both, that was in our tax increment financing site. However, TIA didn't study East Nine Mile. So based on our other consultants with Virtual Arroyo, they had actually recommended both sides. So whether or not council would want to do same treatment on both sides, it was actually on our map up there as both sides. But because TIA didn't study East Nine Mile, they weren't recommending that at this point, so.
You could add it to a motion, ma'am?
What, to remove it? Because I think it's excessive signage, to be honest, because how many other intersections along Woodward have yielded pedestrians? I think that's what a well-designed intersection is for, so you don't add a sign. And so as I drove up Nine Mile on my way here to the meeting tonight, I was, because my office door is right at the intersection there, and it says, no turn on red. So why are pedestrians need a sign to yield, you know, a car need to yield to pedestrians at a red light where they can't turn on red?
No, it's when you turn on green and he turns south. Pedestrians are trying to cross on green.
I know. Oh, well, well, they shouldn't.
No, pedestrians are crossing when it's green.
Once they get green, you're
Once they get green.
... without concern for the people in the crosswalk.
But, wait a minute.
The walk cycles aren't when Nine Mile goes green, right?
Right. Well, maybe it's the timing of lights versus another sign.
We have a traffic extension in the house.
Because I just feel like it's excessive signage. I mean, you know, Scott has talked about excessive signage on Woodward. And so for me, I'm taking a perspective of, this is common sense. Why do we need a sign? And if we need a sign to yield to pedestrians at every intersection with a light turning red, then we need one at Marshall and Woodward. We need one at every section. So I'm wondering, the common sense of having this there, knowing very well that I want to increase pedestrian safety, I do. So I'm just wondering, is this the best resolution to that? I know it's a minor thing, a sign, but, you know, once you add a sign, there's more visual clutter. And I want to make sure that we're not adding more visual clutter to our downtown, and especially another pole in the sidewalk, which is not complete streets. So where would the sign go, those types of things. So those are the types of things that I'm thinking about, about this sign.
I got you.
Do I have a, want to take a stab at that?
Let's see.
You stepped up.
Yeah, I volunteered. No, the, yeah, what the signs for is, I think I even said in my presentation, is that it's there, it's that it's there, it's, I mean, it's a legal sign in the Michigan manual now. It used to be a warning sign. For some reason, it was changed to a regulatory sign, black on white. It basically just tells the driver and reminds them that, you know, you've got to yield to pedestrians that are illegally in the crosswalk. Now, you don't see the sign a lot. It'll be, one thing, it's a new sign. Other locations, I've seen, you know, there'll be where there's, and I can't actually picture it, but if it's, you know, the angle you've got between Woodward and Nine Mile going that way, drivers can, it's a wide, it's more than a 90-degree angle, so it's easier for them to take that turn at a little higher speed than maybe if it was a true 90-degree angle. If you have a lot of pedestrians, it's, you know, by law, they have to do it anyway. It's a reminder, if you're having an issue there with conflicts between the pedestrians and the right-turning traffic on the green, that would be the sign, that would be the sign to do it, just as I said, to remind the motorists. Where the sign's going to go, that I did not look at, so.
Yeah. Well, I don't know. It just seems like if we put one there, then we should be putting one at every red light and one at Woodward. And I drove down from Detroit to Ferndale today from a meeting down there, and I looked at all the intersections, and none of them had turned, you know, yield to pedestrians at the intersection sign. So I don't know. I just feel like it's overly excessive here, and my criticism of traffic engineers is that you love signs. So I'm just wondering if there's another solution that we can possibly look at.
Narroing Woodward.
Narroing Woodward?
Sorry. I had to throw that in there. No, but really, I think as pedestrians are walking across, they're going across four lanes, and I've literally almost had my, clip of my heels or my toes taken off by cars myself, so, and I know many others have as well. So it's a point of probably making, it might be a little excessive with signage in that respect, but I think it's a point of excessive that is maybe needed for a time, for a time period, to see if it works, too.
I would also challenge, other than, I can think of only one place between here and, well, midtown at least, because I drive Woodward every day, that has anywhere near as much pedestrian traffic as Nine Mile and Woodward. And that is the horrible intersection, well, it's not even an intersection, the horrible pedestrian crossing in the middle of Highland Park, which has no signage and everyone, the bus stops are placed so badly that no one crosses the corners, and so that's just a horrible example. But that's the only place that I can think of in that stretch that comes even close to having as much traffic as Nine and Woodward, so I think we are a subtle case here.
Warren and Woodward?
No, no. Warren and Woodward, you get traffic in one direction, not all four.
Pedestrian traffic.
Yeah.
So, anyway, that's my point of view.
And I turn at Warren and Woodward every day and do see people nearly run over.
To address what Melanie was saying, I agree about the signs, but I walk all the time there. And when people are at that section, picture you're waiting there to turn, a lot of people are going to look to see, is there a "No Turn on Red" sign there? And because there already is, I think that sign probably could go right near that, and since they're going to be checking for signs anyways at that intersection, that reminder would absolutely help people. I can understand not putting it on streets where you're already not going to look for that "No Turn on Red" sign, but because that's what people look for, that little reminder, you know, will stick and will save people a lot of potential danger, I think.
Well, if we can consolidate, that would be my preference.
That would be ideal if we could consolidate. Actually, what would be ideal is if a wall could go up while pedestrians are crossing, because I personally agree that on an almost monthly basis, I almost get clipped at that intersection. So there's just something about the volume of pedestrians or the way it's laid out, it's a particularly harrowing intersection, in my personal anecdotal experience.
Well, I know we have that issue, too, at Troy and Woodward, when you're trying to cross and everybody's looking northbound on oncoming traffic.
Crossing over Troy.
Crossing over. They don't even see, yeah, they don't even see you at all. So I'm not sure a sign's going to solve that problem there either, but, you know, I'm not, I'm not full of tools of how to solve, you know, intersection issues. That's why we hire experts, but that's something I am skeptical on.
It's working with the roadways that we have thus far, you know, Woodward not being within our control, and that's where the improvement would have to be made in order to do it without signage.
So I guess at this point, well, Councilwoman, if you'd like to amend this resolution or this proposal, that would be in order. If not, we should probably get, return to our summary of recommendations.
You know what? I would like to amend it and to take that out, just for further review. I would like to see what is being proposed and where. So, so I would...
And that would be the bridge and install signage as recommended?
Right.
Are you taking out the whole thing?
No, I'm just taking out the, we'll include, change the eastbound through lane, because I believe it should be a right turn only lane. But I would like to remove the signage, just to install the signage, to see what else we can come up with, or have a better discussion about what we could put there, so.
Are you making a motion?
Yes. So I have to, there's already a motion, so I have to move to amend the motion.
Is there a motion?
Oh, really? I thought there was. Oh, sorry.
I don't think so.
So actually, a motion is in order, and then we could entertain an amendment to the motion, I suppose, once we got that filed.
Or she could include the amendment to the statement in her motion.
Absolutely.
Two-word, Amy Shaw.
So as presented with...
I would move to approve...
Okay.
Do you want me to do it? I got it.
No, no, I got it. No, I got it. I just thought there was already a motion on the table. I'm sorry.
There is not.
I move to approve the traffic recommendations and street scape concepts for West Nine Mile between Livernoy and Pine Crest, West Nine Mile at Woodward, for changing the eastbound through lane at Woodward and Nine Mile to a right turn lane only, and Troy and Allen as presented.
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Baker.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We said to remove the Troy and Allen, right? Is that what you wanted?
We're going to continue to study the three-way stop, right?
But that's in there.
That's all in there. It was just the loading zone.
Continue the 90-day observation is in the resolution.
Right. It's just the loading zone area that was...
So that is a correct motion on the table.
Kate, I thought you wanted to remove the loading zone from the...
I thought we were removing a loading zone.
I think we said that initially, but it should be removed. Everyone agrees that should be removed. I guess I would just say, I don't support it like this. I want the signage in, and I don't support it as amended. So I think we should try to sign in the least cluttered way that our engineers can install.
Well, I want to see what it looks like and have a further discussion on it. I'm, you know, I want to improve public safety, so that's my main goal, so. I'm just asking it to come back. It can come back in two weeks.
And I would offer, you've really got me thinking about Woodward and Warren now, actually, and even though the majority of the traffic during the day goes north-south, we do have a significant amount of east-west traffic, and with the exception of that, because of, as Christina stated, we don't have control over Woodward. Wayne State has done a number of significant street scape and pedestrian improvements on their other major giant blow-through thoroughfare, which is Anthony Wayne Boulevard. And I will talk with our former Planning Commission Chair and current Planning Commission member, Krista Azar, who works in Wayne's Facilities Planning and Management Department, to see if she can give us maybe some suggestions about what they've done. They've done some really interesting things with automatic pedestrian alerting systems. So it's literally in front of our law school, when you walk past a sensor, it doesn't stop traffic, but you're, you get sort of flashers that light up to alert people that you're crossing the street. They've done things with signals, too, but some really interesting, less expensive options, too. So I will ask Krista if there's anything she can share from Wayne that might help us.
Salt Lake City has big buckets filled with flags in their car. You get to wave them as you walk across the streets.
Are you serious?
Yes.
And you get to the other side, you stick them in another bucket, so maybe you do that.
That's an odd solution.
Oh, in Ferndale, there's going to be rainbow, right?
Yeah. You get to chain them down, maybe.
They don't disappear. Additional comments or questions?
Do we have support?
Pardon me?
Do we have support?
There is a support. Moved by Piana, supported by Baker.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
No.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
No. That item passes. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is Item F, which we added, for those of you following at home, and that would be a resolution to authorize the Police Department to fill the vacancy of the service aide position. Chief, you want to introduce that item?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you. And before I do, I would like to thank the City Manager and the City Clerk for getting this on the agenda. This is a brand-new issue that occurred. As you may recall, we promoted Service Aide Cordova to the rank of dispatcher two months ago, and you allowed us to fill Service Aide Cordova's vacancy with a person on the certified list. And that individual advised us this morning that he is, would like to accept a position with his former employer in a supervisory position, and is, would like to terminate his employment with the city. As you know, this is the cheapest position that we have that fills in as a desk position, so we would like to start that process. And we do have a certified list from the Civil Service Commission that is set to expire on the 16th, I believe, so that's why we put it on the agenda this evening. Kind of an emergency, kind of a deal.
No problem. I would move to authorize the Police Department to fill the vacancy of the service aide position.
Court? I don't know. Guess I heard Galloway, so I will say moved by Baker, supported by Galloway. Any discussion on this item? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Galloway? Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes. Thank you. That item is adopted. This brings us, that concludes the regular portion of our agenda. It brings us to call to counsel, police chief, make the trip again. Anything additional for us this evening? I know.
Just that, there's nothing really of significance from the Police Department, other than we want to, again, remind our residents that we are in the holiday season. Please be careful while you're shopping. Please be careful in the downtown area. Be conscious of the, not only the conditions of the sidewalk in ice and snow, but also be aware of your surroundings as far as individual goes at me. Try to steal your packages, try persnachings. Typically, although we haven't had that many downtown incidents so far this year, this is the type of, this is the time of year that that is increased. Also, you know, so much in Ferndale, but when you are putting packages in the car, be aware that even though you're putting them in your trunk, suspects of this nature are aware of that. They will pop your trunk, they will try different, it used to be, we would tell folks, if you have a bunch of packages, make sure they're out of sight and in the trunk. Well, bad guys have figured that one out, so we suggest that shop, go home, come back and shop some more, but don't put an excessive amount of packages in, even in your car, because they are, they will prey on that as of late.
Great reminder. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Sullivan? Anything else from the Fire Department this evening?
Yes, Your Honor. We like to, heading into the holiday season, warn everybody about candles and placement of the candles when they're burning them. Make sure they're on a plate that's at least one and a half times the size of the height of the candle, so if it falls over, it falls on a plate and not on paper products or plastic products. And also, using lights, Commissioner Covey's recommendation to go green with LEDs. We like LEDs. They're low voltage, low wattage, and they do not put out the heat, so they don't catch things on fire. You can plug a bunch of them together in line and not create a hazard. Regular lights, though, you know, can only plug so many into each other before it creates a draw hazard and melts the wiring and creates a fire, so. Regardless of what kind of tree you have, watch the wiring on the trees and make sure you water it if you have a natural tree, because the winter heat does dry them out, and that causes them to be a major fire hazard. Happy holidays.
I have a comment for the chief, if this is okay. One of our local businesses, Chisano Coffee, had a fire late last week, and I was there this morning. They were back open for business, and both the owner and the clerk who was working had very complimentary things to say about your team and how helpful you were staying, you know, to help them think about what they could do differently to change that.
Yes, we were trying to stop them from roasting their coffee roaster.
Yes.
It literally was red hot. The stainless steel had heated to bright cherry red. You could fry eggs probably three feet away from it if it was that hot. So we were trying to cool it down without causing fracturing of the steel and damage to his equipment, so he could get right back into service. The fire marshal's working with him to figure out some ports to clean it better, so they don't have that incident again in the future.
Thank you for helping our local businesses.
No problem.
Byron, anything from DPW this evening?
As you know, we're a seasonal operation, and with the leaf season done, and we're having, we started sweeping the city last week, and we'll get the east side done hopefully by Wednesday, which leads us into winter. And I'd like to remind the residents that whenever we have four or more inches in a 24-hour period, you need to get your vehicle off the street. If it's not, we've been known to tow vehicles, we don't want to do that. The Police Department doesn't want to do that. There's also tickets that are issued for fines if the vehicle's not towed. There is a fine that will have to be paid. The ordinance has been in effect for almost 20 years. There are people who do have stickers who can park their vehicles on the street, but those are houses that don't have drive approaches, driveways. So we're just asking the residents, it's no more than two or three times a year at the most. Once your street is plowed completely clear, you can pretty much put your car back on the street, curb to curb. But while the emergency is in effect, we ask people to cooperate, and that's it.
Thanks. Great reminder. Appreciate it. Derek Delacorte, anything from Community Development this evening?
Nothing.
All right. Jill, how about Recreation Department tonight? All right. Cheryl Lynn, anything else from the City Clerk?
Nothing further tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
City Manager, April McGrath.
Sure, just a friendly reminder that the next council meeting will be held next Monday, the 19th, rather than the 27th, at 6:00 p.m. The agenda will mostly consist of mid-year adjustments, audit presentation, and mostly a financial evening. There might be a few, it is a regular session, but it's, you know, more of a tight timeline. So it will start at 6:00 o'clock next week, and...
And we will not have a meeting the following week.
That is correct. We'll not have a 27th.
Don't show up, we won't be here.
Exactly. Interviews were had for the HR Generalist position last week, and an offer has been extended, and everybody is very excited to get this person on board. Once that's official, I'll make the announcement of who that is, but we're very excited to move forward with that position. That's all I have.
Appreciate it. Dan Christ, anything for our City Attorney this evening?
Tonight, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you. Anything additional tonight?
Just an encouragement to shop local, and I told local artist, Dina Katsadorian, that I would be modeling my new acquisition this evening, so, Dina, here it is. It's, yes, lovely Ferndale artist who sells at the Detroit Artist Market, so you can support both a wonderful local artist and a local nonprofit. So please do consider shopping local. Every time you buy something on Amazon.com, think about how little it impacts your community and how many fossil fuels it wastes. And that's my soapbox for tonight.
Wonderful. Councilman Lennon?
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right. Councilwoman Piana?
Yeah. I have a couple of things. Last week, on the request of Oakland County, April McGrath, myself, Jennifer Roseberg from the Chamber, and Michelle Foster, who is a volunteer in the DDA and also volunteering with Derek Delacorte and our Community and Economic Development Department, were asked to come to the Oakland County Business Roundtable Annual Meeting to receive a Quality of Life Award. And this award is through the Quality of Life Initiative. There's a Quality of Life Committee, a Transportation Committee, and the Ferndale and Waterford are the two cities in Oakland County that had received this award. And really, what we agreed to do on April 2020, 2010, was to identify the assets, needs, and priorities that would improve the quality of life for its residents. And so we are in process of creating... in process of creating that report, um, with Derek, uh, leading that, but they wanted to recognize our efforts, um, at the annual meeting. So we got an award, um, for us as well as, um, Gary Myers, the superintendent, because the schools have also been involved in this Quality of Life Initiative, um, for our community, and, um, the Chamber has also received one. So, um, we were there to accept it and, uh, had a good time. Um, and I also want to let you know that I sit on the Transportation Roundtable Committee, um, in my role at the Suburbs Alliance, and we had some key things that I was really proud of, that, um, we got into recommendations this, uh, year. Um, Brooks Patterson approved 80% of these recommendations, and some of them that, um, are relevant to us, um, is that, uh, the business community, um, supports a rapid transit plan for the Woodward corridor, and that the development of a Woodward corridor transit plan should be done in stages, um, as described in the regional transit plan. They also supported the newly, um, Troy Transit Center, um, that, uh, that Troy is, uh, looking to approve. And, um, the other one is, is that Oakland County should develop a transit plan that supplements and complements the RTA. Currently, the county doesn't have a transportation plan for the county, so this is, um, I think, some real, um, changes that hopefully, um, the, the commission and the executive team can, uh, work towards to achieving over next year. So I'm really happy for that. Um, and then, um, I have a question for the police chief. Um, I've received a couple, um, questions and concerns about the, the incident at the Taft High School, um, with the student, and I was wondering if you can give a, um, an update.
Yes, uh, Councilwoman, I can. We have, uh, as you know, when this occurred, uh, right at school change, at the, at the end of the school day, um, it was a, uh, it's all of the indications that we have now, particularly after we've been looking at it, it is a robbery. Uh, it was not a school, uh, fight incident that spilled over outside the school. It was a, it was a straight-up robbery. Uh, the detectives are following up and are interviewing many people. Um, we hope to have some type of, uh, resolution, um, but, uh, again, it's going to depend on, um, what has developed during the investigation. Young man that was shot is, uh, still in the hospital as of today. He is okay. Um, we are, um, actively working with the school to improve the security plan there. We have several ideas. They have, uh, security cameras that, uh, they have, this has been part of their security plan for some time. They have them in hand, uh, and shortly, uh, we will be assisting them in, in camera placement, so that will give us some, uh, additional, uh, resources, uh, for this. Uh, every day this week until the, uh, um, holiday break, we have extra patrols there, both at the start of the school day, at the end of the school day. The school district has been very helpful with us in, um, reviewing and giving us assistance with the, uh, with, uh, records and things that we've been, so we've had real no complaints there. Um, other than the individual that, uh, that conducted the robbery, the suspect, um, not being captured that afternoon, uh, the response was, uh, from my perspective, I thought, was a, a very good job that, uh, all the different agencies and entities that were involved, uh, the schools locked down, uh, citywide, uh, very quickly. Um, we had Oakland County provided, uh, air support very quickly. Uh, Madison Heights, uh, gave us a, uh, tracking dog within 15 minutes of the event. Uh, we had a, the entire area cordoned off, and before we cleared, we had checked every single backyard from the school to Livernoy, from, uh, Fielding all the way to Eight Mile, uh, physically checked out every one of them. And we were able to do that and still get the, uh, kids out of school and home before the, before dark. So, um, the plan worked as far as that, but, uh, the bad guy did get away, and we're doing our best to see what we can do about that end of it, too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Councilman Galloway.
Uh, not much. It was just nice to see, uh, a couple new commissioners from Pleasant Ridge here, as well as Pleasant Ridge citizens, working together on a mutual problem, and hope that type of cooperation can continue in the future. That's it.
Great. I just want to thank everyone for coming out and staying with us this late, and for those of you watching at home, appreciate your, uh, your attention. Thank you, and meeting adjourned.